Thomas Paine. Sam Adams. Benjamin Freitlin. These men spoke up for what they thought was right. From their courage came such documents as the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution of the United States. From their willingness to speak what was sometimes unpopular but right, we enjoy such liberties as freedom of speech, the right to keep and bear arms, and freedom of religion. There are those who still wish to oppress our freedoms, and there are still patriots willing to stand up and defend life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Men like Zeb Bell, who honor our founding fathers and what they stood for. It's now time for Zeb at the Ranch, speaking up and defending your freedoms. Brought to you by Magic Valley Les Schwab Tire Centers, and all of the other great advertisers on the program. And now, Zeb Bell.
Ah, think about these words this morning as you get up and get about your day. It is a great deal better to live a holy life than to talk about it. Lighthouses do not ring bells and fire cannons to call attention to their shining. They just shine. Good morning, everybody. Here comes Kate Smith and God bless America, followed by a patriot with our Pledge of Allegiance. Come on, call in, call in. Good morning. Ah, thank you very much. That is the great voice of Kate Smith and God bless America. Good morning to you. I'm Zeb Bell, Zeb at the Ranch with our major sponsor, your Magic Valley Les Schwab Tire Centers, all seven locations serving you, and of course, some of our great advertisers that include Ramsey Heating and Electric at 2600 Overland Avenue in Burley, and our friends at Western Waste, and our friends at Valleywide Home and Ranch, 910 South Oneida in Rupert. Everything, I mean everything, for the farm, the home, and the ranch at Valleywide Home and Ranch. Right now, let's get on over to the main studios and have our Pledge of Allegiance. Good morning.
Good morning.
Would you do the pledge?
I'm a huge frog.
All right, you go ahead and give us the pledge, please.
Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You know, I really appreciate your calling in, and you did a great job. Do it again more often, please. Call us again.
Okay.
All right, sir. Thank you very much. Nice, real nice job on the Pledge of Allegiance. Oh my goodness, don't forget Ted's Diesel and Electric, moving to 635 21st Street in Hayburn. That's right, our old cowboy friend Doug Martin, and he can rebuild starters, alternators, and generators, and sells brand spanking new also at Ted's Diesel Electric, moving to 635 21st Street in Hayburn. It is time for the weather this morning. Brought to you by Cheney Flooring and Home Design, 1228 Oakley Avenue in Burley. Look for the blue door. Give them a call, 267-869-45. All your carpeting needs, all your carpeting needs, all your flooring needs, kitchen construction, home decor, whatever you need to make your house a home, they can help at Cheney Flooring and Home Design in Burley. And right now, here is our weather.
Here's your weather as we do get one day closer to the weekend. We still have that air quality advisory in effect due to all of the wildfires in the area, so if you have asthma, any sort of upper respiratory issues, please take that under advisement if you go out and about today. Otherwise, looking at sunny skies, it is going to be slightly breezy, winds out of the southwest, right around 12 miles an hour. Expect a high of 88 for today, tonight low of 56. Tomorrow, winds picking up to about 20 miles an hour out of the west. Sunny skies, high of 82 with an overnight low of 50. Then for Saturday, still going to be slightly breezy, cooling down to about 74 under sunny skies, and a low right near 47 for Saturday night. That's your weather forecast for Zeb at the Ranch.
Oh, thank you, Gina, and brought to you by some really good friends of ours, with lots of newly refurbished furniture too, that'll fit right into your home decor plans. Cheney Flooring and Home Design, 1228 Oakley Avenue in Burley. Look for the blue door. Hey, let's sell some cattle. Merv May, come on in here, would you please?
I got a set of steer calves there, here to get $31, moment, I am 31, one, I am 32, two, and I am...
Ah, that's the chant of the world's best auctioneer, in my opinion. That's Merv May over at the Burley Livestock Sale Yard. With sale time at 10:30 this morning, don't forget Burley Livestock Sale Yard, 1100 Occidental Avenue in Burley. The number to call for consignments or information on the sale, 678-9411. Merv May, Kate Rogge, and Lance Udi, all serving you at the sale that works for you. Today, here's just a partial list of some of the cattle going through the ring today. They're going to be bringing up a trailer load of 800-pound heifers from the Gamble Wine Cup Ranch in Montello, Nevada. Good folks over there. Marty Bennett, former bareback rider and vet over at Goodings, bringing in a trailer load of 700 to 800-pound heifers. Acme Dairies bringing in some good butcher cows, and TLK Dairy bringing in some butcher cows, along with a good trailer line run. Sale time at 10:30 at the Burley Livestock Sale Yard, 1100 Occidental Avenue in Burley. Merv, sell those steers.
All right, I got a set of steer calves there, here to get $31, moment, I am 31, one, I am 32, two, and I am... 134, four, and I am five, and I am five, and I am five, and I am five, 135, 50, 135, and I am selling $35. Zeb Bell, get bottom again.
Oh my, today is the day. As you're very well aware, we're going to be having Lunch Bunch at Denny's. Don't miss it, and we'll tell you more about that in just a few minutes, 11:30 today. And by the way, we've got a birthday we want to acknowledge, a birthday for tomorrow. Nancy Cotum, lovely lady. Nancy Cotum is having her birthday tomorrow, so happy birthday, Nancy Cotum, just a whole day early, and enjoy the entire weekend. There you go. Hey, by the way, I also want to say thank you to Ramsey Heating and Electric at 2600 Overland Avenue in Burley, and you heard, we're going to have some warm weather yet for a while. Nope, fall's not here yet, and we're going to get some high 80s, 90s, et cetera. Well, make sure your AC, your air conditioner is working efficiently, get those air filters from Ramsey Heating and Electric at 2600 Overland Avenue in Burley, where they provide warm winters and cool summers. All right, let's start things off here this morning real quick. Uh, I absolutely was shocked yesterday when I was watching, and it was the most interesting town hall speech and question and answer period that I think I've ever watched, and it was with Donald Trump. I know I'm caught up in the fascination about Donald Trump, but it was interesting because yesterday, the town hall meetings between Jeb Bush and Donald Trump took place less than two miles apart. And what was really interesting to me is Jeb didn't draw so good. Jeb had, at the max, they estimated about 50 people, and Donald Trump, they estimated in the gymnasium where he was holding his town hall meeting, well over 2,500. Hmm, what does that tell you? But you know, folks, I'm not trying to sway you towards Donald Trump. I'm not trying to sway you towards Cruz, or whether it be Walker, or whomever. I am trying to sway you a way of naturally Jeb Bush. I don't want him to even see the nomination of the GOP, and quite naturally, you know, on the left side of the aisle, no way vote for Hillary Clinton. But, you gotta admit, that it wasn't theatrics. It was not showmanship. It was downright good answers to questions, and his speech yesterday, impromptu, off the cuff, he had notes in front of him, but you'll never notice that his eyes went down to scan the notes. I mean, it was an in-your-face type of speech. I loved it. I did. Trump did an excellent job, and he answered all the questions. And one ditzy reporter, with the IQ of a deflated basketball, said to Trump, "By the way, you keep referring to the illegals' children born in the United States as anchor babies, and that's not politically correct." Well, Trump stopped, and he looked at the reporter, and he said, "So what should I call them according to you?" And the reporter said, "It would be better saying, 'Children born to undocumented immigrants.'" And Trump looked him right in the eye and said, "I will call them anchor babies, and I will on this program." They are. They are anchoring a family situation here in the United States, which I do not agree with, and many, many, many thousands if not millions of children born here in the United States to illegal alien parents have solidified the American dream just by being born here, and that's where the illegality comes in. And I do support Donald Trump in lawyers looking at that 14th Amendment for the potential change, and the illegalities that are being coerced by illegal aliens coming in and birthing their children here. And he said, "And I will remain also in favor of anchor babies. That's the way it's going to be." Uh, there were other aspects of his speech that I absolutely agreed with. We'll talk about that in just a moment, but give me a call. What are your thoughts, honestly? And you're not going to hurt my feelings at all if you disagree. What are your thoughts, honestly, about Donald Trump? I mean, I think I see a kind of a smoothing of the rough edges of this man, and answering the questions, having a plan. His immigration plan, I have read, reread, and twice and third time read, and I like his ideas in there. Give me a call. All right, don't forget Valleywide Home and Ranch, 910 South Oneida in Rupert. Do you know that on Thursdays all day long, any size fountain drink is just 50 cents? Oh yeah, stop in, do your shopping, sip on that. You're going to love it. They've got all your buckets, brushes, all your haulers, lead shanks, all your fly spray. The flies are getting terrible, aren't they? And they've got everything for the farm, the home, and the ranch. They got your clothing, they got your boots, they've got your work footwear, they've got your fishing licenses, and what a great fishing department at Valleywide Home and Ranch. Yep, nice people, local people, serving you at Valleywide Home and Ranch, 910 South Oneida in Rupert. Really good folks. Now, as you know, as I'm waiting for your call, it better be coming in at 436-2244. Today is Lunch Bunch, and we're going to be over at Denny's Restaurant, and this is the day, uh, once a month on my diet, that I kind of sit back like an old grin and cat, and I say, "Bring it on." I love the menu. I'm in favor of breakfast, naturally, any time of the day, and they've got great, great breakfast offerings on their menu, luncheon specials, and of course, the dinner specials, and the service is fantastic. It is great food with Thomas and Terry, the whole crew, at 611 Overland in Burley. The home of Zeb's Lunch Bunch. At 11:30 today, and we've got a lot of gift certificates to give away, compliments of Stokes Food Center, along with Handsome Mortuary, Waters Gift, and more with Sharon. Thank you, Sharon. And Walmart, thank you very much, and Smith's Food and Drug. My goodness, a lot of people are helping us out with all those gift certificates for Lunch Bunch at Denny's. Don't you miss it. All right, give me a call, 436-22441-866-927-4587. There were a couple of parts and points in the speech that I really, really liked, and one of them was about money. One of them was about campaign financing. One of them was about owing your soul to the company store and all those donors that maybe give you or slipped you a check for a million dollars or more. He's not taking it. Trump is not taking it. He's, "I don't want their money. I don't want to be beholden to anybody. I'm going to pay for this campaign myself." And then he went on to say, and you know, you can take this as boasting, you can take it any way that might offend you, but I take it from a guy that absolutely has been an entrepreneur, a guy that has put together all the deals. He said, "I don't want their money. I'll pay for this campaign on my own." I like that. Good morning, caller, you're on the air.
Good morning, Zeb. I got a new slogan for you.
All right, what is it?
Trump the Frump.
Trump the Frump? Keith, I hope you didn't stay up too late last night thinking about that.
No, but I'll tell you what, right now, Trump is my hero. He's the only one that speaks what's on his mind, and he means what he says, and he says what he means.
Yeah, and I'll tell you, for those in the audience, and Keith, if I'm wrong on the explanation of your slogan, tell me if I'm wrong, but the way I interpret it, it's Trump the Frump, meaning Trump over Hillary Clinton, that I have called many times on this program, Miss Frumpy. I believe that's what you're saying, right?
That's exactly what I'm saying.
That's what I thought.
I'm just trying to be nice.
Well, don't be on this program, because that would be being politically correct, and I won't accept that on this program. Niceness, I was just going to say, Keith, niceness on this program, just for the sake of being nice, is not acceptable. You've got to be your rude, crude self if you're going to fit in.
Okay, but my wife also says, "Thank you for reminding her," for how old she is.
No, it wasn't a reminder to remind her of how old she is, it was a very subtle reminder for you to get that billfold out of your pocket and go get her a birthday present.
You wouldn't have to bring that up, would you?
Yes, sir, I did. See you at Lunch Bunch.
[laughing] You have a good day.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, calls are welcome, 436-22441-866-927-4587. Don't want to be politically correct, not on this program, ever. Uh-uh. And something else that was said yesterday, and I hope many of you heard this or watched it on television, is that he calls a spade a spade, and when it came to the absolute asinine deals that the United States has made through this Obama administration, he, and these are his words in the speech yesterday, "We made a terrible deal when we traded Bergdahl, a dirty rotten traitor, to the United States for the five absolutely bad guys that went back to fight against us from Al Qaeda." And he's right. This deal with Bergdahl, somebody call me and tell me, "Have you heard anything in the news? Have you heard anything about a prospective trial that was supposed to be earlier this summer? Now they've moved it, supposed to be in this next month of September? Oh gee golly, I wonder what's going on? Nothing in the press. It seems like there may be a little pushing under the carpet of any information about Bob Bergdahl." But Donald Trump called it as it is, and I like that. He's not a politician, doesn't want to be. When he went to fill out the forms and it said, "What's your occupation?", he just put down "real estate." And I like that. He is not a professional politician, trying to mince words, sparse words, pars words, and always be loved and liked by everybody. He doesn't care, and that's what I like about Donald Trump. Give me a call, please, 436-22441-866-927-4587. While I'm waiting for your call that's coming in, I also want to remind you that on Tuesdays, we are very blessed to have a segment at 10:06 on my program called Doctor History. I love that segment. Learn a lot, and it's entertaining, too. Minnichus Sales with Zack and the rest of the crew sponsoring Minnichus, I should say Doctor History, at 1321 East Main Street in Burley, right across from the airport. Caller, I'll be right there, don't go away. For all your remodeling, your lumber, your needs as far as shingles, and all the upgrading of your windows with the western windows, oh boy, save on your heating and cooling bills. Don't forget, too, they've got all the tartar farming and ranch gates and panels, everything you need at Minnichus Sales, 1321 East Main Street in Burley. Good morning, caller, you're on the air.
Good morning, Zeb.
Hello there.
Mexico now wanting to charge Americans for their stay in Mexico.
Yeah.
Have you heard that?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
That's nice. How about us charging that bunch that keeps pouring in over here?
You know what we ought to do is set up various toll booths, and across the Texas and Arizona and California deserts, et cetera, and for all the illegals, you know, just cha-ching, ka-ching, and then send the Mexican government the bill, and if they don't pay that bill, then of course, we'll deduct it from all the foreign aid checks and everything else that we send down to that nation that is taking away a lion's share of the business. Ford Motor Company going to be moving down there, et cetera. How about that? Would you run a toll booth and just go ka-ching and send them a bill?
Oh, boy. And then, of course, they want proof that we're American citizens and all that stuff going over there, and then they're sending all their army of welfare recipients up here to end up on your and my tax bill.
Yeah, yeah. Everybody takes their boot heel and they grind it in to the United States of America. And with this administration, we are gullible enough, and I'll just use the word dumb enough to accept it, through this pitiful Obama administration, and it's going to get worse in the next 500-plus days.
Well, Obama is incapable of making any kind of decisions. That's why he keeps running to the United Nations, this way to give him more time on the golf course.
No, no, you're wrong, Tony. You're wrong. He's not incapable of making any kind of decisions. He's very capable of making very poor decisions.
That's right. Well, he's making the wrong ones.
Yeah, I agree with you. How's Mary this morning?
She's on fire.
Well, then you better...
She's catching the television.
You better...
Let the stock market go down.
You better be sitting there with a big bucket of water, because I've seen her temper, and you don't want to be a bad boy.
[laughing] Well, I put the hose on her when she gets that bad.
All right, Tony, God bless you, man. Thanks.
Okay.
Oh, those are nice people in Twin Falls. I appreciate them. Calls welcome, 436-22441-866-927-4587. Would you, come on now, you got to tell me this, and I've asked you this question before, but I want to, with everything that's going on in politics today, look at the sleaze, look at the lies, look at the absolute cover-up on the Hillary Clinton campaign. How could, and I'll ask this question again, how could anyone in their right mind sit back and say, "Oh gee, she would be such a wonderful person for president"? With that blemished past, and this absolutely unlawful present, how could anybody ever want that woman as president? As I said, the only way she should get into the White House is to buy a tour ticket. That's it. Uh, calls welcome, 436-22441-866-927-4587. In just a moment, we have got to talk about what was uncovered in the Iranian nuclear deal, and if this doesn't absolutely just fry your bacon to a burn, nothing will. Nothing will. Okay? Stand by. Want to remind you about a lovely lady, doctor of audiology, and that's Christine Pickup at Mount Harrison Audiology and Hearing Aids. You know, hearing is so important, and did you know that the health of the inner ear is affected by your cardiovascular and kidney health? That's right, the inner ear is very sensitive to changes in the blood supply, and if you've had recent heart problems or kidney problems, you should have your hearing checked right now. And you can by calling this number, 312-0957, and get a hearing screening at Mount Harrison Audiology, right across from the Minnokah Hospital Emergency Room, and the number to call, 312-0957. Mount Harrison Audiology with Dr. Christine Pickup. You call her today. Really nice lady. Oh, and by the way, you know on Mondays at 8:31, right on the old nose, we have a cinnamon roll giveaway. A half dozen delicious cinnamon rolls. I mean, they're the size of like Spalding basketballs, they're huge. Sophie's Chatterbox at 5:30 East Street in Rupert. My goodness, and you can win on Mondays a half dozen delicious cinnamon rolls from Sophie's Chatterbox. They're open 6 to 6 weekdays, 6 a.m. to 2 p.m. on weekends. Woo, great food at Sophie's Chatterbox. All right, give me a call, 436-22441-866-927-4587. When I heard this, I absolutely, Deanna and I were watching the news, and I looked at her, and she looked at me, and she said, and I said to, "How dumb can we be? How dumb can we be?" In the Iranian nuclear deal, the dim bulbs that represented us, the United States of America, John Kerry and his team of Fruit Loops evidently agreed to let Iran inspect themselves. Now, I got to say that again for effect. They have a part of the agreement that says, "Well, you, Iran, can inspect yourselves, and if you find anything illegal or going against this treaty, you must inform us." Now, you talk about a bunch of guys that acted like during this deal agreement that they fell off the melon truck. It's us. Who in their right mind would put anything into an agreement that would let Iran inspect themselves? You know, this is absolute lunacy, and I think that this may be the last nail in the coffin, that the Democrats that have any backbone at all, or any goodness at all, will step up and say, "No, we can't pass this. We have got to revoke this, along with our brothers and sisters on the other side of the aisle, the GOP. This is not worthy." Now, we're seeing Menendez, and we're seeing Schumer, and some of the Democrats step up and say, "No, we're not going to sign it." But now, maybe, maybe this incompetency and this complete lunacy of saying that Iran can inspect themselves will make everybody sit back and say, "No. This is a deal that is not a deal. This is a deal that's not going to help America. This is a deal that's not going to protect our allies. This is a deal that absolutely has no screening or security whatsoever." And maybe it will be the death nail of this nuclear deal. However, there in the Oval Office is the major threat with his phone and his PIN. Yes, we're talking about Barack Hussein Obama. And he said he will veto and override to make sure that his deal is part of his legacy. I'll tell you, folks, there's trouble in River City, and it's not the trombone player. Give me a call, 436-2244. Come on, folks, get up off the couch. Give me a jingle, and let me hear what you have to say, 436-22441-866-927-4587. Give me a call. Um, Berry Equipment and Rental, and we're going to have Nick from the Burley location on with us a little bit later on this morning. They have the equipment to get the job done right. Oh, have you been by that Burley location and looked at that great, big, huge, orange Deuceonne loader? Woo-hoo-hoo. That dude can get the job done. Boy, I'll tell you what, you just get on in there and check it out, leasing or buying, they've got all the equipment for you. Caller, I'll be right there, don't go away. And you stop in and see them, they've got three locations to serve you. Addison Avenue, West Twin Falls, South Lincoln in Jerome, and 159 West Highway 30 in Burley. Yep, the equipment to get the job done right at Berry Equipment and Rental. Caller, good morning, you are on the air.
Good morning, Zeb. How you doing today?
Great, sir, thank you very much.
Good morning. I heard that on the news yesterday about this provision that was in that agreement to let the Iranians inspect themselves.
Yeah.
And my jaw hit the floor. I'm like, "Are you kidding me?"
You know, it's almost like an old Abbott and Costello comedy show, or The Three Stooges, or whatever, from days gone by. I mean, the punchlines, the gag lines, and this is absolute insanity to think that we can trust a country that has nothing more on their mind than world dominance and also having those nuclear weapons to control the world, and we're going to make an agreement that says they can basically inspect themselves? Whoa, buddy, this is absolutely tragic.
Yeah, that's kind of like asking the fox to inspect the hen house to see if all the hens are still there.
Yeah, and you know what's really troubling, what's really troubling to me is, in all seriousness, that I think we're going to see a joining together of the Democrats and the Republicans to put this deal down, vote it down, but then we have Mr. clandestine, we have Mr. insidious sitting in the Oval Office that is going to veto it, and boy, I want to see if this can be overridden. I would love to see him absolutely have this negotiation fail.
Oh, so would I, not for, just as some way of maybe getting, you know, him stirred up, you know, poking the bear so to speak, but because this is the right thing to do for the security of not only the United States, Israel, but the entire world, because if you give those radicals over there nuclear weapons by one means or another, you know that they're going to use them.
Well, you can imagine the conversation. Somebody from our State Department calls up over to Tehran, and they say, "Hi, how you doing today? Oh, by the way, have you been inspecting yourself? You're not doing anything illegal, are you?" And they respond, "No." And we hang up the phone, and we go along our merry way. Isn't that basically what it amounts? And they respond, "No," and we hang up the phone and we go along our merry way. Isn't that basically what it amounts to?
Well, that's just, in my opinion, that's just stupidity like you wouldn't believe. And, uh, you know, if this Congress, this, the senators, especially the Democrats that are Obama's buddies, don't have the sense to veto this, I mean, to put this thing down and then override a veto, they definitely need to be taken out of office.
I agree with you. I agree with you, and I think-
It's a ham sandwich.
Hey, thanks for your call this morning. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Alright, sir. Caller, good morning. You're on the air. Thanks for your call.
Good morning, Zeb.
Now, now, wait a minute, before we start, you know, when you hear something as dumb as this, that in an agreement we're going to let them police themselves, it's almost like a punchline from a comedy show, isn't it?
You, you can't make this stuff up, though.
I know. I know.
I think if you were a writer in a movie and doing a movie, you couldn't make this stuff up.
You know, really, why and how could we send representation over to this meeting with the Iranian leadership? And since that agreement was signed, they were laughing and dancing in the streets and yelling and chanting, "Death to America", and it's almost like they're treating us like we have, we're Ned and the first grade reader. We're dumber than our post, aren't we?
Well, the people that done the negotiating are, I'll guarantee you that.
Why-
How much money did we spend to have Kerry and his entourage over there for how many months, talking to them? And what, what did we come out with? We come out with nothing. We come, our prisoners are still over there. We did not get any sanctions against them. There's no, "If you don't do this, you can't do that," so.
Well, I tell you, Doug, it's-
Just come in, so.
Alright, well, listen, you're welcome. You're welcome to call anytime, my friend. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Caller number two, I'll tell you what, I'll be right there. Stand by. Don't go away. I promise I won't take more than thirty seconds. I got to tell everybody about Josh Mays at JNW Horse Shoeing. Josh and his son Wiley, I'll tell you what, these are good guys. I like them. And they do a lot of corrective shoeing from draft horses all the way to ponies. And he's got a special till the end of this month of August. You need your old paint trimmed? Well, I'll tell you what, twenty dollar trimming fee. That's it. Twenty dollars on a trim? That's pretty darn good. JNW Horse Shoeing, four three two 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 six oh, over, four ten four one oh, eighteen thirty-seven. You call today. Good morning. You're on the air.
Yeah, good morning, Zeb. You need to have your guy turn up your volume. I can just barely hear you, so.
Alright.
Anyway, um, you know, there's a new book out, you know, that, uh, and when you mentioned about we can trust, uh, Iran, you know, with, in their agreements and so forth, but the new book is, uh, it is about Islam. It's by Glenn Beck.
Yeah.
And it's available at Costco and bookstores now for twen- ten, you know, less than ten dollar bill. Anyway, it, it discusses thirteen deadly lies about Islam, and it just really lays it into it. I got a copy, couldn't put it down. And I want to recommend it for everybody that, you know, maybe think they know a little bit about Islam and, uh, their theology, their religion and so forth. Uh, it, it really goes into detail. It's extremely well-referenced. And, uh, because this thing, this, they, they, they only need a small percentage of people, and we've almost reached that critical mass here in the Magic Valley without bringing in all these Syrian unvetted refugees that are coming, uh, posed to come in here immediately.
Well, just a minute, Adrian. I want to ask you, we want to stay on the track here. We want to stay on the oval that we're racing on right now. In regards to the Iranian nuclear deal, how, and you've been around politics almost all of your life, how could anyone representing the United States of America sit down and with a straight face tell the Iranians that don't respect anybody, never will, never, uh, in the future will they ever, how could you tell them, "Okay, we'll concede. You can police yourselves"?
Yeah, right. It's like letting the skunk, uh, you know, police himself in the, uh, in the hen house.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, sorry, it's just, that's a good reference, I think, because they are a bunch of skunks. And, and part of their own theology says, "In the lower house, they are obliged to lie to get their, the end justifies the mean." Now, once they get into the upper house and they get the upper hand, then they come out and say, "Oh, we said that all along. We, but our theology says we can lie until we get control." So, I mean, folks, wake up. This is, and the smell of coffee, this is, this is deadly stuff coming right into our neighborhood, in our valley here, and it's already here. It's just a matter of us waking up to the fact of the dangers that are really, uh, imminent and bringing in these unvetted Syrian Muslim refugees, and there's no Christians. Why is it that? That's because the guy that's in charge of it is, he's an international socialist for the United Nations, another reason to get out of the UN. You know, you've heard me talk about that many times, but this is all just being thrown at us, and we're supposed to accept it. Folks, wake up.
Yeah.
You need to stop it and get hold of the governor, our elected officials, and, and stop it.
Oh, well, of course, now, Adrian, I've got another caller, but I will tell you this. You have nothing to fear, because a nineteen-year-old girl from Kimberly that was an intern last year, she understands the situation and all is well, I'm sure.
Yeah, well, all is well. We better, we're, we're awfully naive, and for those of us who's been studying, fortunately Pastor Sharam, I hope you'll have a chance to get him on your program.
Yes.
Call in, interview, or whatever, right away, because he is excellent. He's planning to come back here, I think, uh, in September sometime, and so certainly people need to, we'll get the word out on that, but in the meantime, this thing is coming at us like a freight train, and we're stuck on the track.
I agree. I got another call. Adrian, thank you so much. God bless. Have a good day.
Good, have a good one.
Thank you. Caller number two, you are on the air. Go ahead, please.
Good morning, Zeb. How are you today?
Well, you know me. I get upset easily over people that I think are doing dumb things to this country, which is the Obama administration in its entirety. What are your thoughts?
Well, my thoughts are, what has he got to put in, uh, his memorial? Is it going to be his golf course or his golf, uh, school? That hasn't worked. I've got just, just a ticket for him, and it won't cost him a nickel. Let's go out and find an old outhouse, some place, a cloud even, uh, a mirror in it, and give it to him.
Uh, you know, God bless you for your thoughts. An old outhouse in the Obama library that's going to cost a billion with a B dollars. I like that. Enter, sign in, get a ticket, go through, and there's the outhouse right in front. I love that idea. Thank you very much.
Have a good day.
God bless you. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Yeah, billion. I'm not talking a million. I'm talking a billion dollars that Obama wants to build his legacy library. Oh, have I got some things I'd like to put in that library. Mm, 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 mm. Give me a call, four three six two two four four one eight six six nine two seven four five eight seven. None of which I can talk about on the radio. FCC is listening, as is the NSA. Uh, listen, let's have the weather forecast. Caller, bear with me. Don't hang up one minute. Bear with me. It's time for the weather. Brought to you by Mad River Laser at five oh two East Street in Rupert. Oh, they've got all the back-to-school sweatshirts, Carhartt, Bernie, Nike, Gildan, Hanes. You bet you can get custom-made with your name on it or your business logo, jackets, caps, everything. Nobody, nobody does the job that they do over at Mad River Laser. Five oh two East Street in Rupert, you stop over and see them today. Right now, here's the weather.
Here's your weather as we do get one day closer to the weekend. We still have that air quality advisory in effect due to all of the wildfires in the area. So if you have asthma, any sort of upper respiratory issues, please take that under advisement if you go out and about today. Otherwise, looking at sunny skies, it is going to be slightly breezy, winds out of the southwest, right around twelve miles an hour. Expect to have eighty-eight for today, tonight low of fifty-six. Tomorrow, uh, winds picking up to about twenty miles an hour out of the west. Sunny skies, high of eighty-two with an overnight low of fifty. Then for Saturday, still going to be slightly breezy, cooling down to about seventy-four under sunny skies, and a low right near forty-seven for Saturday night. That's your weather forecast for Zeb at the ranch.
Very well done, Gina. Thank you very much. Brought to everybody by Mad River Laser. Five oh two East Street in Rupert, you stop in and see them today. Caller, thank you for your patience. Go ahead, please.
Yes, I think about how this president has personally wasted the taxpayers' money flying around with his two planes or whatever, ten planes, or it's, when you stop and figure it out, it is the most unbelievable thing you could ever imagine what it takes for this guy to go travel around and how the money is spent and wasted. And, uh, I think about these fires, and I think about the money that could be used to fight these. And, uh, instead of funding, and Idaho's funding is dropping dramatically because of the fires right now. And this sorry assobee couldn't tell less about what is burning out here in the west.
Well-
And it's such a terrible shame. Go ahead.
You know, Randy, I, I'm concerned about you not liking Barack Obama or his lovely wife, Michelle. And in Sunday's paper, did you notice that there was a little bitty pamphlet to where you and I, all of us, can share in the memories by getting a Michelle Obama inaugural ball commemorative doll? And I, for, I, for one, I put your name on this little pamphlet, because I know you'd like to call and order one.
I'll tell you what I'd like.
Oh, now be careful!
I'd like to see Barack, Val, no, we always forget about Valerie Jarrett.
Yeah.
Just happens to be born in Iran, if we haven't forgotten that one. She was born in Iran, okay? So, you've got Valerie Jarrett, Michelle Obama, and Barack Obama. I want them to get out here on the fire line and get themselves a pick and start making a fire line here and fight the fire and work sixteen hours, and then, you know, get whatever it is they happen to get to eat. That's what I'd like to see. And then the next day, or after they do that a week, I'd like to see them go out and milk cows for, you know, for about a week, all of them. Walk through the crap to get the cows and bring them into the holding pen so they can-
Yeah, but wait a minute, wait a minute. They're used to walking in that stuff every day at the White House.
Yeah, yeah, they just don't realize that, uh, it, it, it's such a sorry situation that, uh, you know, again, every day you wake up and you hope for, uh, a silver lining in this storm.
Yeah, Randy, I always appreciate your call. Thank you very much. God bless you, man. Have a good day. Uh, I want to tell you a little bit about what happened now with Hillary. Oh my, another tragedy. Standby. Burley Physical Therapy and Rehabilitation, twelve sixty-three Bennett Avenue, Suite Two in Burley. These folks are good. They've got so many great physical therapists headed up by Nick Greenwell and his staff that can make you and help you get back to feeling like yourself, help you get back to being you. That's right, all the sports medicine, all the exercises, my goodness, that, uh, hydrotherapy pool. Oh, man, the only one like it in the area. And you stop in or give them a call today. Make an appointment, six seven eight one one nine one. Burley Physical Therapy and Rehabilitation, that number again, six seven eight one one nine one. Is there a call waiting? I don't remember if I heard the moo of the cow or not. How about it, Wheels? Have we got anybody waiting over there? I didn't know.
No, sir.
Oh, well, invent one. Okay. Anyway, um, here we go, another sad part of the Hillary story. Do you know that Hillary's BlackBerry, mm-hmm, mm-hmm, with all of her information, why? How strange. It's been discarded and lost, and here's something else stranger. All the staff members close to her have been told, for some reason, to throw away their cell phones, get rid of them, and get new ones. Why, if one wasn't as jaded in his thinking as I am, one would think that, why, there might be another cover-up. Surely that couldn't be the truth. Why, Hillary is as honest as the day is long. Yeah, and her BlackBerry's gone, and all the email scandals, and now her close staff members told to basically get rid of their phones and get new ones, and all of you out there, I'm sure, are saying, "Well, they were probably all scuffed up, and so they needed new ones." Uh-huh, yeah. And did you hear about the woman back east that passed away? Died from cancer, unfortunately, but she left a message for her friends. And it was, "In lieu of flowers, please do not vote for Hillary Clinton." I am not making this up. I saw it this morning at four twenty-five on the news. Honestly, this woman passed away. She left a message for all of her friends. "In lieu of flowers, please do not vote for Hillary Clinton." There you have it. Calls welcome, four three six two two four four one eight six six nine two seven four five eight seven. Give me a call. Cassia County Fair and Rodeo in full swing. Yesterday was a great parade. And today, of course, they've got a whole bunch of things going on on the free stage over in the gazebo area, and they've got hypnotist Kendrick Lester, and they've got singing, and they, at one PM this afternoon, have the, uh, Queen's Horsemanship. And then tonight, of course, the first performance of the PRCA rodeo. Oh my goodness, and tomorrow, my goodness, in the morning, you're going to be looking at more judging, and they're going to have, uh, all kinds of fun again with open stage and super entertainers from this area coming in, and of course, the rodeo tomorrow night and Saturday night. Don't miss it. Your Cassia County Fair and Pro Rodeo right there at the Cassia County Fairgrounds. Alright, your turn. Give me a call, four three six two two four four one eight six six nine two seven four five eight seven. I'm not kidding. I saved this from the newspaper this last Sunday, and it is from the Ashton Drake Galleries. How many of you saw this about Michelle Obama? Raise your hands. Keep one on the steering wheel if you're driving. And, uh, it says, "Relive a glamorous moment in history with this Ashton Drake exclusive. Michelle Obama inaugural ball commemorative doll." Why, I'll race right out and buy three of them. Caller, good morning. You're on the air.
Well, hello, Zeb. How are you this-
I'm good, sir. What do you got cooking for us this morning?
Well, I just, first of all, let me make sure and reiterate, now, I will not be voting Democratic no matter what here, but anyway, I are Democratic. I was over at the Cassia Fair. Uh, we've got a few more days, so I hope things change. But, uh, on the Republican side, I was a little disappointed to see so many votes there at the Republican booth in their little bean jars for Zeb Bush. I don't quite understand what people around here are thinking. I thought they were a little more independent thinkers than that.
What, did they have kind of like they did at the Iowa State Fair, to where all the candidates had a little jar and they could put a kernel of corn in there? Is that basically how they did it?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Beans and jars for all the Republican candidates.
What is, and, and you got to ask some of these people this question, caller. You've got to find out so that you can call me back. What is the possible fascination with Jeb Bush? He absolutely would be, I think, in my mind, the worst of the worst to throw at anybody on the left from the Republican Party. Uh, we do not need another Bush in the White House, and I, I absolutely am adamant that Jeb Bush is not the man for the job. I hope he doesn't even get a smell of the nomination. I hope there are many before him in the lineup. Why? Why would people want Jeb Bush?
Well, of course, I did to bring that up with the representative that was there at the booth, and, uh, I got absolutely no answer. Of course, that's what I expected. There's no commitments there.
You know, isn't, isn't it strange-
Not yet, but I'll continue to work on it.
Please do.
I'm gonna watch those bean jars.
That is your homework assignment for today, being the last day of broadcasting week for me on Thursdays. But that's your homework assignment, to get an answer from somebody. Doesn't it bother you, sir, that people will not make a commitment anymore, stand up for what they believe in, and they'd rather say, "Oh, I'm non-committal. I don't want to make a statement. I might make somebody mad." I am so fed up with that passing-the-buck attitude. Aren't you?
Oh, yeah, definitely, and I'm, like I say, I'm just a little shocked that, uh, the people that put the beans in that Zeb Bush jar are uninformed or whatever they are. I don't know. Maybe it's me. I don't know. Maybe you would take a bigger-
No, don't accept response, don't accept responsibility for somebody else's inaction or ineptness, because you know what you're doing. I re, I appreciate that.
Okay, Zeb, thanks.
God bless you, man. Thanks. Hey, don't forget your Magic Valley Les Schwamm Tire Centers. All seven locations, serving you with the best in service. The best. The best in tires for all your vehicles, your cars, your pickups, your SUVs, horse trailers, boat trailers, whatever. The best in brake service with professionally trained technicians and premium quality parts. The best in front end alignments, the best in shocks and struts, the best in batteries. Well, there is no reason to go anywhere else. The best is right there at all seven locations of your Magic Valley Les Schwab Tire Centers with Lane and Rupert, Dave on Blue Lakes in Twin, Mike in Buell, Mike and Jerome, the Twist Family in Paul, John on Pole Line in Twin Falls, and my buddy Randy, the old Seahawk fan on Overland in Burley. Your Magic Valley Les Schwab Tire Centers, the best. There you go. It's Thursday, and coming up next hour, we've got a report with the Chamber of Commerce. And then at nine twelve, I'm going to talk a little bit about Black Lives Matter. Well, they don't matter more than anyone else's, and you heard it on my program. We'll talk about that a little bit. Then Dog Nation, and then at nine thirty, Rita Ramsey. Don't go away, Zeb at the ranch, I'll be back in six. Oh, welcome back. Hello, hello, good morning, as we're in hour number two on this Thursday, August twentieth. Don't forget Lunch Bunch today at eleven thirty at Denny's. Absitively. Hey, thank you very much to our major sponsor, your Magic Valley Les Schwab Tire Centers, all seven locations serving you. Thank you very much, along with some of our great advertisers, and they are Ramsey Heating and Electric at twenty-six hundred Overland Avenue in Burley. Thank you, Ramses. Along with Valleywide Home and Ranch, nine ten South Oneida in Rupert. Everything for the farm, the home, and the ranch at Valleywide Home and Ranch. Also, don't forget Ted's Diesel Electric is moving, six thirty-five Twenty First Street in Hayburn. Yep, moving, moving, and Doug can rebuild starters, alternators, and generators and sells brand new, too. Ted's Diesel and Electric moving to six thirty-five Twenty First Street in Hayburn. Good old boy, right there. Oh, and by the way, too, every day on this program, when we start our show after the pledge, we have our weather and it's brought to you by some really nice folks. Kyle and Whitney Chaney of Chaney Flooring and Home Design, they know all about everything you need to do to make your house a home. Absolutely, all the carpeting and flooring, kitchen construction, home decor items, newly refurbished furniture, and great ideas at Chaney Flooring and Home Design. Look for the blue door at twelve twenty-eight Oakley Avenue in Burley. Oh, and by the way, too, before we get our guest on the phone, I also want to say thank you, thank you so much to Joel Heward, manager of Hanson Mortuary at seven ten Sixth Street in Rupert. A family place serving you and your family. And when there's the passing of a loved one, everything is thrown up in the air, dotting the i's, crossing the t's, very short time, let them help. Always with the highest ethical standards, with unquestioned integrity. Hanson Mortuary, seven ten Sixth Street in Rupert, number to call, four three six five six three six. Well, let's say a very happy good morning to the lovely Kay Cameron at the Minnacasha Chamber of Commerce.
Good morning, Zeb.
How art thou?
I'm great, it's a beautiful morning. I am at the Cassia County Fair this morning and it's, it's a beautiful day.
Now, you're over at the Cassia County Fair and you have been, I believe, all this week, and you're asking people's questions and giving them prizes, are you not?
We are, we, um, we play Minnacasha trivia, just like we did at the Minnokah County Fair. You step up, you spin the wheel, it gives you a category, we ask you a question, a trivia question about our community. And if you get it right, you get to put your name and a chance to win fifty dollars at Chamber Cash. We draw a prize, a winner every single day. And everybody who plays our game gets a piece of candy, so everybody goes away a winner.
All right, now, I'm going to put you on the spot here real quick. Uh, I will, I will subject myself to ridicule, but pick a topic and a category that you think I might know the answer, and go ahead, shoot your best shot, lady.
I'll do agribusiness because that's the first one that comes to my, my mind.
All right.
What are, what do the four H's, for four H stands for?
Oh, heart, health, hands, heart, health, hands, oh boy. Heart, health, hands, I pledge my heart, I pledge my hands, I pledge my, I forgot the fourth one.
I think it's head, head, heart, health, and hands.
There you go, it was so easy, that was easiest one to remember and I didn't. So I don't get a prize, all I get is a piece of candy, thank you very much.
Yes, but it is a lot of fun and we have our area information here, um, some of it, we always have lots of great information in our visitor center, we just wanted to bring a sampling of that here. We just really want to be here to be of service to the community and to help people, but, um, we really want people to come out and enjoy the fair because it's really a lot of fun. I've had breakfast here this morning, I've been in watching the pigs being shown, and what a great day.
All right, now, I've got a question for you. Yesterday Wheels over at the station was going to call me after the station, uh, the program was over, and, uh, do they have any cats showing over there? And by the way, how do you show a cat?
A cat showing? I haven't seen any cats showing, but they are showing pigs, getting ready to show some heifers it looks like. And they've got rabbits and turkeys and goats and, I don't know, all kinds of things that they show here, but I have yet to see any cats showing.
All right.
Next year, maybe that's something they can get on the dock up for next year.
Now, knowing you-
Cats showing at the Cassia County Fair.
Now, knowing you like I do, and we've known each other now for quite a few years, I would bet half my pay this week that you have already been over many times, not just once, be honest, to the Declo Steak and got some of those delicious maple bars.
Actually, I brought my kids in this morning to watch my nephew show his pig, that's why we came in so early. And my kids both said, Mom, I want a maple bar for breakfast. So I've had, I had a little bite of their maple bar. I think I've had my allotment for the week, but, um, they both had a maple bar for breakfast and, um, morning time is definitely the way to go on the maple bars because you don't have to have nearly as big a wine as you do.
Well, now, this is just a little hint, this is not meant to beg, but you could go over there after this call and you could tell them how nice Zeb was about, uh, giving them advertising about their maple bars, and you could tell them to put them in a box and ship them UPS to me right away. You, you could do that.
I could, but it's not nearly the same thing as eating them when they're still warm and the frosting's melting off of them, that was the case this morning. So you need to get off your show and, and head on over here and get a fresh hot one right out of the fryer.
Oh.
That's the way to eat them, right there.
Anything else you want to tell us as I'm savoring the thought of a maple bar about what you're doing at the Cassia County Fair?
No, we just really want to be here to support the fair and to let people see our visibility here in the community and, and if they have questions, come and ask us about things going on and, and things that take place in our community because we really try to be the front door to the community and answer the questions and have the knowledge of the businesses going in and the things about employment and opportunities that we've got, as well as the many tourist attractions to see. I think oftentimes people think we're just a hub of information for things to do, but we're really involved in a lot of things and we really want to be a hub of information.
Well, you never did tell us how your relative did showing the pig.
Oh, he, he did all right. He didn't get the top of his class, but he didn't get the bottom of his class, so I always like to come and, and support when my nephews or nieces, um, participate in fair. Um, and I, my kids put stuff in the fair this year, I've got some jelly in the fair. It's just so fun to come and see if you get a ribbon.
What kind of jelly did you-
People who participate.
What kind of jelly did you enter in the fair?
I entered in a jar of cherry jelly.
And surely you made more than one.
I did make more than one, and I got a blue ribbon.
And surely you would like-
Cherry jelly.
Surely you would like to share the wealth because that is my passion, is different kinds of jams and jellies. Surely you can find time to swing off Highway thirty and drop that off, surely you could.
I, one of these days I will. Because I, I also, not only do I enjoy making it, but I love to share it.
Oh, God bless you. Anything else real quick before I let you go this morning?
No, just like I said, come down here, it's great, come and walk through the exhibits. I, I was pretty proud of my daughter, I guess I can do a little bragging right here, she got a red rosette on her painting at the fair.
Oh.
Um, that she painted up on Monday, I was out of town and, under, I guess, her own will, she sat down and painted a picture and got a red rosette, so we're pretty proud of her. Um, but it's just fun, come down and check out all the exhibits and enjoy the great food and all of the great things they've got going on here.
Absolutely. Kay Cameron, with the telephone in one hand and a maple bar in the other, God bless you at the Cassia County Fair.
Have a great day.
All right, thank you. Nice lady, and they do so much for the community naturally. Your Minnacasha Chamber of Commerce, thank you very much. Holy mackerel, got to pay some bills here. Let's not forget Let's Ride, where the fun is sold. Yeah, you walk in the door and you can buy fun. What are you talking about? Well, you stop in there and they have got the greatest selection of ATVs. I mean, just go in the front door, stop right there and turn your head left to right, right to left, look at all those ATVs, all the different colors, all the different sizes, everything, holy buckets. You can have some fun up in the hills this fall, enjoying all the colors, the fall colors and everything. Woo, nice, fun is there at Let's Ride, two seventy Highway twenty-four between Rupert and Hayburn, and all the accessories to go along with that four-wheeler, you better believe it. And if you already have a four-wheeler, you need some service work done, got the problem solved, they've got a great service department to take care of you at Let's Ride, two seventy Highway twenty-four between Rupert and Hayburn, yep, where the fun is sold. Mm, 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 good people. Oh, and there again, right there, you're on Highway twenty-four, you might as well make an appointment the same day to stop in and see Cameron and Siemens Insurance, Highway twenty-four in Rupert. Now, you know, sometimes we always put this kind of thing on the back burner, and don't do that. I mean, you've got to make sure you're protected with the best of life insurance, health insurance, retirement planning, employee benefits, oh my goodness, and so much more. They are very dedicated and responsive to your needs. Call for an appointment today at four three six four four two four. That number again, four three six four four two four. Cameron and Siemens Insurance in Rupert. I was mentioning a little bit ago, and I had a call the other day on my cell phone, and, uh, lady said, well, you know, it seems like you're dismissing the fact that black lives matter. And I said, ma'am, I, I never said that on my program, ever. And she said, well, if they have the slogan, black lives matter, they feel like they're being, uh, the downtrodden, they feel like they're not getting enough respect, so why would you say, like Martin O'Malley, all lives matter? And this really was maddening to me. Because I will not allow any group of people, brown skin, black skin, white skin, yellow skin, doesn't make any difference, red skin, to dominate a phrase of where their lives matter more than someone else's. Even though I don't go along with the philosophy of the Democrats and the liberal left, Martin O'Malley was absolutely correct when he was on that television interview and he said all lives matter. And for these absolute insane groups headed up by Black Lives Matter that get offended and yell and scream and holler and take away microphones from, uh, like they did Bernie Sanders up in Seattle, how dare you say all lives matter? Well, I'll tell you something, folks, on this program, it's not going to be a discernment ever, ever, for one group of people or classification. All lives matter, all babies' lives matter. I don't care, again, about color. I will not refer to anybody as a hyphenated American, like African American, Spanish or Mexican American, I'm not going to do that. If you're a legal citizen in this country, you are an American. You are an American. And don't give me this political correct garbage because it's not going to be accepted on this program. And all lives matter. That's the way it's going to be with no discrimination against anyone, anyone. Calls welcome, four three six two two four four one eight six six nine two seven four five eight seven. Oh, by the way, are you shopping for back-to-school clothes? Hey, the guys, I got to talk to the guys for a minute, okay? Kind of saddle up over here to the microphone for a minute, the radio. The Mayfair Cellar's Men's Shop has everything you need to go back to school in style. Hey, look at old Bird over there, man, does he look good. Well, for this month of August, take twenty-five to fifty percent off T-shirts and jeans and shorts and hoodies and wallets and backpacks, and they've got brand names like DC and Quicksilver and Lucky Brand. Oh, I'm telling you, the Mayfair Cellar Men's Shop, locally owned and operated for over fifty years in downtown Burley. They've seen the styles, they've got them all, right there at the Mayfair Cellar's Men's Shop. You stop in and see those good folks today. Oh, and one other thing that I have to tell you about here real quick, and, uh, that is, of course, the Gooding County Fair and Rodeo. Yeah, the Gooding County Fair and Rodeo is also going on this week. And holy bucket of bolts, have they got a lot of things cooking over there. Uh, at eight o'clock this morning, they started with the poultry judging and then, uh, here they're starting right now with the beef showmanship. And, uh, yeah, that's going to be starting up pretty quick. And then tonight, don't forget the Great Big Rodeo, family night at the PRCA rodeo. And let me tell you, right after the rodeo's over, they have got a great group out of Las Vegas called the Garage Boys Band and Shoot Number Seven. Oh, they are good, you're going to love the entertainment. And then on Saturday, don't forget, at eleven o'clock over at the Gooding County Fair, they've got the Idaho Rodeo Hall of Fame induction dinner and ceremony, and that is going to be a lot of fun. All of this and more at your Gooding County Fair and Rodeo for two thousand and fifteen. Really, really good folks over there, thank you very much. What else have I got? Oh, today's Lunch Bunch, too, I got to get this in one more time, that we're going to be over at Denny's Restaurant at, uh, six eleven Overland in Burley at eleven thirty. That means I'm going to have to take off a few minutes early here off the program so that without having to speed, I can make it there right on time. Yeah, I know, some of the cops are watching me pretty close and I've been going by at the speed limit and waving a cordial hello, hoping they don't take and misinterpret that wave. And, uh, so anyway, we're going to be over there at eleven thirty this morning, and we've got a lot of gift certificates to give away, including from Stokes Food Center and Hanson Mortuary, Waters Gift and More, thank you Sharon, and Walmart, along with Smith's Food and Drugs. So I'll be there at eleven thirty this morning for Zeb's Lunch Bunch at Denny's Restaurant. Where, where did all these dogs come from, anyway? Holy smokes, what's going on over there?
Dogs out! Ho, 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 let the dogs out!
Holy cow, we got Dobermans, we got Pekinese, and we got, what happened to that little wiener dog, anyway? What's going on, Officer Ken, morning at Minnokah Animal Control?
Good morning, Zeb, I'm doing great today, how are you?
Oh, you know me, I'm just hanging in, hanging on by my fingertips.
I understand that one.
What's going on in the world of canines?
Well, actually, I am working on the new facility. And we got all the kennels in last Friday and I've been getting them all put together and, uh, got it all laid out, uh, just working on getting everything tightened down and getting ready to mount, or, uh, actually, um, attach them to the floor.
Uh-huh.
They don't move and everything.
Right.
Uh, just, I mean, it's been a busy week with, uh, getting that foot, or getting all that done. Uh, and, but it's been quite nice and stuff and that, uh, everybody's been seeming to, been doing a pretty good job of taking care of their dogs, making sure they're not getting loose. We, I've only got two dogs in my facility right now, and that which I've had in there for just over a week, and they are actually, uh, we've got homes for them already.
Mm-hmm.
Um, one thing I do want to, uh, uh, kind of get out there and stuff and that with it being farming season and at, on, or harvest, and that there's a lot of, uh, farm trucks out on the roads and that, uh, I've actually picked up a, a few, uh, dogs that have been hit by, uh, by farm equipment. So make sure you guys, especially living out in the country, are keeping your dogs contained so that they're not getting, uh, run over and killed.
You know, right there, I'm going to stop you, Ken, and I'm going to ask, uh, Wheels to turn your mic up just a little bit, but you have really touched on a subject that needs to be amplified even more because just yesterday, coming home from Twin, uh, a couple of combines and everything else and all, I saw the dogs, and slower vehicles are a dog's delight. You can see them smile when they're sitting in the front yard because they want to chase them, and oh my goodness, the danger factor.
Exactly, I, I mean, you got those combines, you got those huge tires on them, uh, I mean, they don't take much, I mean, and they weigh, um- much, I mean, and they weigh thousands and thousands of pounds, so I mean, once, once they get hit on that, they're done for.
Yep, absolutely. Nothing worse or sadder to lose your dog being hit by a vehicle on the highway.
Exactly. And another thing, too, is if somebody finds a dog that is running at large on that, don't just stop, pick it up, take it home, and then post it on Facebook. Get ahold of your, your local animal control facility for that area that you found it in.
Right.
Because we actually get, I get calls and stuff, and that, "I'm missing this dog, I'm missing that dog," and I see no hiding or hair of it. And I also get people that call me up saying that they found a dog, and that, and, or want somebody to describe the dog.
Yeah.
If, if you're missing a dog or you find a dog, make sure you get ahold of the local animal control facility, and they may know where it's at.
Hey, what is the law, or what is the jurisdiction on having dogs in the back of a pickup? Let me give you a scenario that I saw about a week ago. I was headed down to Burley, and there was a black lab in the back of a truck that was ahead of me, and he came up behind a slow-moving combine, and at that same time, a dog came running down the front yard towards the combine. Well, you know the scenario, the dog in the back of the pickup jumped out, started to fight with the other dog. What kind of a restriction or law is there about transporting dogs in the back of a pickup?
You know, I have been researching that thick and thin, and I have not been able to find anything in, in the state of Idaho that talks about the transporting of dogs in the back of a vehicle.
Yeah.
I know there are states out there that have, that it is forbidden to transport a dog in the back of a vehicle unless it is in a kennel.
I see.
And, but the state of Idaho does not have a law when it comes to transporting, transporting of dogs in the back of a vehicle.
Well, here we had a scenario where the dog in the pickup, A, jumped out onto the lawn of owner B and started to severely thrash dog owner B's dog, and I just wondered what the liability was there.
The liability there and stuff, and that is the owner of the, of the dog that was, Annette, that was being thrashed, because it was in its own yard, Annette, they, they actually, and Annette are able to take the individual whose dog attacked their dog to small claims court and get any, get any restitution, everything for the vet bills or whatever, vet care that that dog needed.
Okay. So I guess the lesson is, when you have a dog in the back, you might be cruising home at 55 miles an hour, and old Spot might be just sitting there until you slow up for something, and then all of a sudden, you're in a world of problems.
Exactly. And I mean, and I've, I've picked up dogs, Annette, cow dogs that have been roaming around on the country roads that have been injured because they've jumped out of the back of the vehicle.
Yeah, yeah. You take like Ruby, she's got two inch long legs, she's got a one inch high vertical, she does not sit in the back of a pickup.
No, and my, my dogs and stuff, and that, I mean, I've got, like I said, I've got a Chorgie and I've got a Toy Fox Terrier, and they ride in the, in the cab of the vehicle with us wherever we go.
Absolutely. Anything else about summertime and take, oh, a lot of water, a lot of water. Don't forget the water for the dogs.
Exactly. Lots of water, and I mean, especially with this smoky season, too, and that, take a little extra caution on that, and try to keep them in an area that's well-ventilated, so that they're not getting, or breathing in a lot of this smoke from all these fires that are around.
Yeah.
There's that, major respiratory issues with the dogs, along with humans. But I mean, this, this time of year, take, take extreme caution and stuff, and that with your animals.
All right. And you say that the building of the new facility, getting the kennels up and everything, you are looking at, pretty soon, you're gonna have everything done.
Pretty much. We're, I was talking with my boss the other day, and we are shooting to be able to have an open house and ribbon-cutting ceremony towards the end of September, and being able to be moved in, in over there before the first of October.
Very good. All right. Officer Ken Mordt, Minidoka Animal Control, God bless you, man. Have a great week.
God bless you.
Thank you. And where'd all these dogs come from, anyway? I'll tell you, I hope nobody, because I know a guy that can catch them, and that's Ken Mordt, Officer of Minidoka Animal Control. Does a great job over there, super job, and always look forward to having him on the program. Oh my, let's see, what else have we got here this morning? We are just moments away from having a phone call visit with Rita Ramsey, as a matter of fact, and for once, on a Thursday, it's hard to believe, I've got all my commercials, everything right on time. Holy cow, let's go to the phone line and say good morning to Rita Ramsey. Are you there?
I am. Good morning.
Well, now, before we get into any subject matter this morning, do you have any idea what tomorrow, the 21st, is?
Well, I know it's Friday.
Now, you're being vague on purpose, because I have word that tomorrow, the 21st, happens to be your birthday.
Ah, you wouldn't have to remind me, however, I have earned all of my birthdays, so...
Well, would you, from Deanne and I, and you're such a nice lady to work with, and would you please take our humble greetings of happy birthday, Rita Ramsey?
Well, thank you very much. I will accept those.
All right. And I wish you a very good day. Now, tell us, please, what has your hubby got planned for you, or what has he spent in absolutely no thought of how much it might cost?
Oh, I don't know about that, but I do know that all, all of our kids, all, all two of our kids, but all of our grandkids and our son-in-laws are all coming for the fair this weekend. They always come, and that's birthday enough for me, is just to be around my family.
Well, now, that is very well done. But now, as far as birthday cakes are concerned, what is your favorite birthday cake, so that Glenn and everybody can be aware of what to get you on this special day tomorrow?
Oh, anything that says cake on it is good with me, so...
[laughing]
It doesn't really matter, I'm, I can just go with anything.
All right. And of course, now you gotta have the whole schlemiel, you gotta have ice cream and cake and blow out all the candles and make a wish, and how about sharing us your birthday wish?
Oh, my birthday wish is that people would have common sense and start paying attention to what's going on before we burn down.
Uh, we are in the process of that right now, I'm afraid, but I absolutely want to wish you a very happy birthday. By the way, quickly, too, Rita, coming up on September 10th, we are going to have another of our extravaganza, Patriots' Day at Ramsey Heating and Electric, and I thought maybe I'd give you just a little time to talk about that. That is a very special day, we'll do a remote broadcast right from your offices.
Yes, we normally, over the last, I don't know how many years, have kind of done a Patriots' Day with the hats off to the farmers and, and mostly a customer appreciation. We, we do a lot of work, or not a lot of work, but we sell a lot of things to the farmers, and, and we understand that it's the ag industry that keeps our, our community going, and so we just wanna let the farmers know that we appreciate it, but we've got a lot of customers and all of them as well. So we just have a little customer appreciation thing and do a deal on the radio, and you have to know Glenn said he's not going to sing in place of Keith, so...
But rumor has it that you are going to give us a couple of verses of "God Bless America", is that right?
Um, if I can get a CD out, I will, but otherwise, you'd all have everybody putting their hands over their ears going, "Stop, don't do this anymore."
No, I doubt that's gonna happen. I gotta check with Wheels. Wheels, do we have any phone calls coming in yet?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, well, then we'll start into our first topic of discussion. My goodness, did you happen to see the interview and the questions and the speech from Donald Trump yesterday? Please tell me you did.
I did. I did. I thought it was pretty darn good.
I thought it was excellent, and you know what? What, what impressed you? I wanna get this opinion from you. When Obama is up there at a podium without his teleprompter, he stutters, he mumbles, he can't keep a continued sentence, he can't speak in phrases, weren't you impressed with Donald Trump off the cuff yesterday?
I really was, and I noticed two or three different times that he kinda, you know, he moved back and forth just a little bit, but you could tell he was just kind of gathering information in his mind and trying to categorize it, but he did not have a teleprompter, and I don't think he even had notes, because I didn't ever see him look down at notes.
But you know, the message was that he wants to make America economically great again, and he had many messages. And I really got a kick out of the ditzy reporter that tried to correct him on the phraseology of anchor babies. Give me your thoughts on that one.
I was actually quite, quite impressed with that also. However, earlier on in the day, I had listened to Mark Levin, and he had a guy who was a constitutionalist explain what the 14th Amendment was about and why it does not allow anchor babies. It's the Congress who allows anchor babies.
Yes.
And, and so, these people who are saying, and Trump's one of them, that it is not our, our responsibility, it is not in the Constitution, we don't have to change the Constitution to change it. All the, all that has to happen is Congress needs to say, "You know what? This is the way it is, because if, if you were a diplomat and you were here and you had a child, your child does not get status as a citizen."
That's right.
And nor should they. And, and it also specified that, that aliens who are here are not, and so we've got not only a lot of the ones coming across the south border, but there's tons and tons of Chinese people that are coming over here in flocks to have their babies here so that they can stay.
Well, now, Rita, and I know you like this gentleman, but I have been opposed to many, and quite frankly, most of his philosophies, and also the way he treats his guests, Bill O'Reilly. And he was adamant that everybody was wrong on this 14th Amendment, and he was right, but quite frankly, my wife and I, last night, we looked at the TV screen and shouted to him, "O'Reilly, you are wrong." And he's always so adamant that he knows more about it than anybody else.
I was quite, quite doing the same thing as you were. I was yelling and saying, "Why don't you just watch Sean Hannity? Mark Levin's gonna be on there and he's explaining all of it, and it's gonna be written on the screen, and you'll know that you're just backwards on this one."
Did you notice certain parts of the speech that really stuck out to me? Number one, when he made a non-politically correct reference to anchor babies, and God bless him, because that's the way it's gonna stay on this program, too. Number two, he said, "I'm not out soliciting million-dollar checks or donors, I'll pay for this campaign on my own." And number three, that really stuck out, was when he started talking about Bo Bergdahl as a quote, "Dirty rotten traitor." What are your thoughts?
Well, I think it's finally time that somebody says what it is, because you and I both know that when we heard that he was captured, that our first instinct was, "Oh my heavens," and then you hear a few things and you say, "He wasn't captured, he left, he left on his own accord. He defected, actually." And then all of a sudden, he's supposed to be the, the poster boy of it all, and then, of course, the Obama administration uses it as a propaganda thing so that they can, "Oh, yeah, well, we can let loose of the, these five Taliban so they can come back and cause more, more damage to our country," and it was just an excuse that they were using. And so, I'm glad that somebody's finally coming out and saying, "Hey, wait a minute," and, and this, this will go on to every web, or every news website and so forth, instead of it just being of like, "Oh, it's just those, those terrible people that are either Tea Party or Fox News people saying it, so don't pay attention."
Let me ask you this, Rita, and you've been involved in politics for a long, long time, but now, right now, today, on this August 20th, can, can Donald Trump get the nomination of the Republican Party? Or, and I'm not trying to make any problems for that run for the presidency, I'm not trying to throw mud at him in any way, shape, or form, but is he so much of a novel thought and novel idea that when it comes right down to brass tacks in the voting booth, people may not vote for him because they still are a little bit afraid of him? What are your thoughts?
Well, I, I think that's probably a possibility there. However, he's gaining a lot of momentum, and, and we're still a long ways out, so it won't matter, but I will tell you that when we had our Tea Party meeting last week, there were about two-thirds of the people in our meeting, there were probably about 50, no, there were around 50 of us there, who were pro-Donald Trump, because he's talking about the things that need to be talked about. Not that he's just this wonderful conservative, because he's not, but there weren't, there, the other third were kind of like, "You know what? I'm just skeptical, I'm skeptical, I just don't know, I just don't know." So it's, it's one of those things where I think the novelty of it is, a lot of people are looking, looking at it, they're hearing him on every media outlet that there is, and that's really good, because he's bringing out a lot of stuff that needs to be talked about that you don't ever hear presidential candidates talk about. I was just looking through an article here that Wayne Allen Root wrote about his speech, and he said, "You know, I will make people on welfare find any kind of work." You know, there's things like that that need to be said that people aren't saying, but I also kind of think that as, as time goes by here, there's gonna be a lot of, I think there's gonna be a lot of black people that are getting informed as to why now they're being thrown over and under the bus.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
And they'll probably pick up and go a little more conservative, would be my guess.
Oh my goodness, though, we have to talk about another major travesty that happened to Hillary Clinton. Oh, I know it was all accidental, I know something happened, it was a Black Wednesday, my goodness, there was a heavy cloud over her and her helpers, because she lost her BlackBerry, and for some strange reason, some of her staff members closest to her were told to throw away their phones. Oh, this couldn't be because of anything illicit, could it?
Oh, absolutely not, but I'll tell you one thing, and that is, the Department of Justice better start slapping them with some obstruction of justice claims, because they are absolutely doing everything that they think they can. I think at first they thought, "We can just hide it and we're above the law," and now it's kind of like, "Oh, no, they're getting kind of serious about this, so maybe we better, oh, shoot, maybe we better just get rid of them, let's throw them in the Potomac or something."
Well, let me ask you, though, from the, from your standpoint as a woman, and other ladies that you talk to, how can she stay in the race even now today with all the negativity over Benghazi, all the negativity over the server, all the negativity over the absolutely felonious activity with the emails, and now the trying to, like you said, shelter telephones and cell phones with information that might be on them? How? How can she possibly still be in retention of possibly being the Democrats' number-one nominee?
I think they're starting to jump ship pretty fast. I, I, I'm surprised that her numbers are really as good as they are, and I think that it's kind of bogus, but I think that there's a lot of people that are just saying, "Until there's something better, we're gonna hang on with that, because we, we really don't want those mean Republicans." Why, they're, they're, they're wanting to cut, cut back on things, and you know the usual, it's the uninformed voters that don't really know what's going on there, but I'm, I'm surprised that she's keeping her numbers, because I think they're gonna start really tanking.
Uh, by the way, I have to ask you, if you were, you are a news junkie like I am, and I mean that out of respect, but did you hear about the woman, I think she was from Florida, I could be wrong on that, that she passed away and left a message for all of her friends, and it stated, and I quote, "In lieu of flowers, please do not vote for Hillary Clinton." What did you think about that?
I didn't hear about that. That's pretty powerful. I hope they like her enough to take her advice.
Oh, amen to that. Uh, oh, and real quick, before I do a weather forecast, I've gotta ask you, Mr. Devoted to Climate Change and Taking Over America and Changing It the Way He Wants It with All of His Billions and Billions, would you explain to me why George Soros is buying coal mines?
Actually, I have a theory on that, and I don't know, and it's, I mean, of course, not educational, it's just my guess, but we know that Soros will do anything for money, and he's trying to collapse our economy, and so if anybody's half-informed about Soros, they know that's what his design is. So all I can say is, he's looking at it saying, "Hmm, things are kind of low right now, I can pump a bunch of money in there, we can do a few things that make it look like, well, this is one of the only coal plants, and so they're gonna have to have some still up and going, so the, the values of the stock goes up." He bails out after he makes tons and tons of money on it, and then, you know, it just drops right off the thing, because they're closing all of them. I, I can't in my, in my mind at all reconcile with the fact that, that we can get along without the coal. I think it's just one of those things that as soon as somebody else gets in office, they're gonna have to bring them back in and, and get them back up online and going again. gonna have to bring them back in and, and get them back up online and going again."
Absolutely. Uh, we're gonna take a little break for about sixty seconds with a weather forecast, and then I'll have more with Rita Ramsey. Tomorrow's her birthday! Happy birthday. We'll be back in just a moment. Don't forget, the weather this hour brought to you by Duck Uglies, 163 West Highway 30 in Burley. Great place to take the family. It is, the dining is absolutely great and super entertainment. And like on, uh, tonight and Saturday, my buddy Ned Carter, that guy has a repertoire of songs that'll knock off your boots. Absolutely great, you're gonna love it. Duck Uglies, great food, great entertainment. They got a new sandwich, a pastrami sandwich that is absolutely fantabulous. You stop in to Duck Uglies, 163 West Highway 30 in Burley. Here now is the weather.
Here's your weather as we do get one day closer to the weekend. We still have that air quality advisory in effect due to all of the wildfires in the area. So if you have asthma, any sort of upper respiratory issues, please take that under advisement if you go out and about today. Otherwise, looking at sunny skies, it is gonna be slightly breezy, winds out of the southwest right around 12 miles an hour. Expect to have 88 for today, tonight low of 56. Tomorrow, uh, winds picking up to about 20 miles an hour out of the west. Sunny skies, high of 82 with an overnight low of 50. Then for Saturday, still gonna be slightly breezy, cooling down to about 74 under sunny skies and a low right near 47 for Saturday night. That's your weather forecast.
Nah, thank you very much Gina. Brought to you this hour by Duck Uglies at 163 West Highway 30 in Burley. Oh Rita, by the way, um, if you and your business have to do any negotiating with some of your suppliers, why don't you please contact John Kerry and his band of merry men to do the negotiating for you? And then they can put a clause inside that negotiation that says they can inspect themselves?
Well, I think we should just, uh, call on the UN to come and do everything for us because that's all they want to do is just abdicate the power over to the UN, let them do it. I can't believe what adult John Kerry looks like. I mean, he just looks like he absolutely has no clue about anything.
Yeah, but wait a minute, why isn't it a mirror reflection of the entire Obama administration? Why isn't it a reflection on Obama because he's the one that put these people in place? He's the one that's really pushing for a signed agreement? He's the one that said if Congress doesn't push it, he will veto them and go ahead with it anyway? Why isn't all of the blame on Obama?
Well, actually, it should be, but this is, this is one president who has never taken an ounce of responsibility. He's never said, "You know what? I'm in charge here and so I will take the blame." If he has actually said something like that, he never meant it, he's never had to take responsibility for anything in his life. He has been catered to from the time he showed up in Chicago as a young college guy of, "Oh, you're, you're something we can make you into." And they've done that, and they've, they've given him a fast track to politics and right into the United States Senate after they're underhanded everything else that they did. And he's never worked for anything and it's just a really sad deal that, that people would elect him and elect him the second time. I mean, he should have been a Jimmy Carter syndrome kind of deal where it's like, "You know what? We just don't need another one."
Absolutely. Caller, good morning, you're on the air.
Yeah, good morning, couple things, you know, uh, they're gonna be rolling on these trade agreements and we need to jump in the middle of wish and, and Crapo to vote no on these things. They both voted for fast track for whatever reason. And I haven't gotten any kind of reply back from them and they've just ignored it. The other thing, asking Rita, what's going on as far as the refugee, uh, 300 Syrian Muslim refugees coming, uh, we're very concerned about in this part of the Magic Valley. What's going on in your Tea Party people up that way? Are they trying to get this thing stopped as well?
All right, we'll have her answer that over the air. Thank you very much caller. Rita, go ahead with a response if you would please.
In our meeting last week, we had a video and we had a deep discussion about the Syrian refugees and the problem that it is. And, um, most of the people who come to our meetings are people who are wanting to learn and, and actually know, um, you know, somewhat on it. But when, when we bring out the facts and let them know what's actually going on there, they're totally opposed to it as well. And, um, uh, they've been made known about the meetings, the various different meetings and to go and visit with Crapo about it where he was having his, uh, little town meetings and stuff. So we're, we're working on that and we are, my biggest thing is trying to get people informed to understand what it's all about. And it's not really about CSI. CSI is just a beneficiary of a bunch of money and of which they keep thinking, "Man, if we can just get more or keep this coming in, we're gonna be good." So they're being used as pawns. But these refugees are the ones who are the, are the biggest losers in this is because they're brought over here as pawns. CSI's using them as pawns. But it all boils down to the, the, uh, elections and political will to change our state over to blue from red. And so if they bring in enough people that, that, um, will start voting in the, uh, you know, for Democrats, and, and they will because they're, they're dependent upon the government.
Right.
Then they, then they can change the state over to blue, just like they did up in, in Minnesota, and they've done it around the country with various different, um, groups of refugees that have come in. Because when they come in, they actually give them fast track and they can be citizens within five years, whether they know the language or not.
Well, and one other comment I wanna make about the Refugee Center at CSI, and I have been very vocal against it, and I'm very vocal against those that say, "Oh, well, they're vetted thoroughly." No, that's not true. The FBI and Department of Homeland Security have both admitted the vetting situation is not even up to par at best. Because they don't know who a lot of these people are, they're taking by their namesake only as to who they say they are. And for CSI to say that they're thoroughly vetted and we may not have any problems at all, that is absolutely pie in the sky.
Well, it is, and, and they, this is what happens if somebody says, "Oh, they're vetted, they're safe, it's okay." And like a point was brought up in the meeting that we had, um, at the first of the month, and there's one on every first Thursday in Twin Falls, is that they have the FBI helping to process these people and bring them in. And so here you've got the FBI, instead of doing background checks and tracing out whether this person is, is who he says he is, and getting any, any information that documents who they say they are, they're doing all this kind of stuff of like, "Well, we've gotta process and we've gotta do this." It kind of reminded me of on the border, how you had your ICE agents, you know, changing baby diapers and stuff like that instead of watching the border.
Absolutely.
This is what's happening, is the FBI is trying to process, process these, um, refugees instead of keeping their eye out where they need to be looking and doing the right kind of diligence in investigating.
Well, and in fairness to what you just said, and giving a little bit more support to what you just said, a report came out about ten days ago from the FBI that they are overwhelmed. Those are the words from their headquarters, because they've got so much to do right now, they don't have the manpower and the time. That's not a very comforting statement.
No, and as we know, Obama lives by the cloud and pivot thing where it's okay, let's overwhelm the system and then we can take advantage of any of the catastrophes that happen out of it.
Real quick Rita, I've only got about one minute left exactly. What about the Tea Party at the Cassia County Fair?
We're not having a fair booth there, but we will be having our regular meeting on the 10th.
Okay.
September.
Well, happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you tomorrow. Enjoy your birthday Rita Ramsey, thank you.
Thank you, we'll see ya, bye.
All right, take care, thank you much. Rita Ramsey, and I always look forward to having her on the air on Thursdays. Very, very nice lady, thank you very much. Oh, about this time of the day, you know where I'm headed. About this time of the day on Thursdays, I look at the clock and then I think back to four o'clock in the morning when I had an itsy-bitsy little bowl of bran flakes. Ooh, I'm so hungry right now. I'm starving to death. Well, I happen to know some great places to go if you are hungry and starving to death. Let's go to Taco Bandito, mm, mm, 2301 Overland in Burley. Steak and Chicken Burritos. And they got breakfast burritos with scrambled eggs and bacon or sauces, cheese, onions, tomatoes and sauce. Oh, and a new lime ranch dressing, absolutely fantastic. All of this and more at Taco Bandito, 2301 Overland in Burley. How about Steve-O's? Steve-O's at 290 South 600 West of Hayburn. Food made the way you love it. Absolutely with the hand-patted hamburger patties made daily with love. And of course pork chops with salad and a choice of potatoes. And Steve-O's Nacho Fries topped with cheese and jalapeno peppers. You are going to love the menu choices. Right there at Steve-O's, 290 South 600 West of Hayburn. And burgers, et cetera. Two, two locations to serve you. 124 South Oneida in Rupert and 700 Overland in Burley. Did you know that all the way till the end of this month of August, Root Beer floats only 99 cents after 3:00 PM? Oh, I'll take 10. Delicious burgers and all kinds of goodies. The onion rings and the cheeseburgers and the bacon burgers. Oh my goodness, you better get on in to burgers, et cetera. Two locations, Rupert and Burley. And last but not least, I'm drooling, excuse me, I had to swallow. Uh, last but not least in our tour of great places to go if you're hungry and starving to death, the AC Drive-In, 601 East Main in Burley. And they've got the orange and lemonade freezes and the strawberry milkshakes and a delicious addition of the chicken fried steak sandwich. Knock your boots off delicious. Along with the famous Farmer Brown Burgers and the fries. All of this and more at the AC Drive-In, 601 East Main in Burley. And those are just a few great places to go if you're hungry and starving to death. Oh boy, howdy, am I ever, I'll tell you what, I'm hungry. Um, we're gonna take a little break and, uh, then when we come back, we're going to at about 12 minutes after 10, start with our Cassia County School Days. And today we have Sandra Miller on our program. Then at about 10:23, we're going to have Nick from Berry Equipment and Rental. And then at 10:32, my old buddy, the Seahawk fan, dyed-in-the-wool Seahawk fan, Randy from Tires West Les Schwab. And we're gonna talk about the making of tires and everything else. So it should be pretty interesting and informative to wrap things up. And then yours truly is gonna skedaddle out of here a little bit early, get on the highway and zoop, over to Lunch Bunch at Denny's. Don't you miss it. We'll see you back here in six minutes. Oh, here we go, last hour. Man, it is smoky outside, getting in the throat, a little bit of a sore raspy throat, cough and everything else. And then of course, gets in your eyes, watery eyes, absolutely not a good day to be outside if you don't have to be out in the smoke. Good morning, Zeb at the Ranch, I'm Zeb Bell with our major sponsor, your Magic Valley Les Schwab Tire Centers, all seven locations serving you, along with some of our great advertisers, including Ramsey Heating and Electric at 2600 Overland Avenue in Burley, and our friends at Valleywide Home and Ranch, 910 South Oneida in Rupert. Everything for the farm, the home and the ranch at Valleywide Home and Ranch. And real quick too, don't forget Ted's Diesel Electric moving, they're moving to 635 21st Street in Hayburn, right there on Alfresco Road. Doug Martin, great at rebuilding starters, alternators and generators, also selling you new Ted's Diesel Electric, moving to 635 21st Street in Hayburn. Oh, and by the way, let us, before we get our guest on the phone in just a few moments, let us also take a little trip over to the Chadwick Sports Grill at 139 West Main in Burley. Oh, the special for today, chicken salad sandwiches served with a fruit medley, choic aside, and super salad. You're gonna love it. All the great menu choices and of course, all the people at the Chadwick Sports Grill, 139 West Main in Burley, today with a special chicken salad sandwiches. You stop in at the Chadwick. Okay. You know, uh, the Cassia County Fair and Rodeo is in full swing and just some of the activities that are going on tomorrow on Friday that you don't wanna miss. Uh, 7:30 in the morning, boy, those kids have gotta get out of bed early, the 4H FFA swine fitting and showing. And tomorrow also, they've got the 4H Open Class Building at 11 o'clock, the, uh, commercial building's open. And at 1:00 PM tomorrow afternoon, the Paramutual Horse Racing and the PRCA rodeo starts tonight, goes through Saturday night. All of this and much, much more at your Cassia County Fair and Rodeo, right there at the Cassia County Fairgrounds. Don't you miss it. Uh, let's see, what else have I got? Oh, a quick reminder again, real fast, we are going to be at 11:30 this morning at Denny's, 611 Overland in Burley for Zeb's Lunch Bunch for the month of August. Lots of door prizes, and I mean that, uh, thanks to these various businesses. Stokes Food Center, the new location right there on East Main, along with Handsome Mortuary, thank you Joel, Waters Gift and More, Sharon, my dear friend, and of course Walmart, our friends over there, and Smiths Food and Drug. We appreciate each and every one of those folks in helping to contribute to the door prize drawings at Zeb's Lunch Bunch, coming up at 11:30 today. Don't you miss it. We are very blessed on Thursdays, excuse me for clearing my throat on the radio because man, that smoke is really coming in my office here all of a sudden. Uh, Cassia County School Days. And we have two great sponsors that we wanna say thank you to. And one of course, A Child's World at 1308 Overland in Burley. And reading is fundamental and they've got the best of children's books over there at A Child's World. They've got hundreds of new fall arrivals and I'll tell you what, they got all the clothing, they've got everything for the babies. I'm telling you folks, this is a family store. A Child's World, 1308 Overland in Burley. The other sponsor is of course, Ambulatory Surgery Center at 1344 Highland Avenue in Burley. Lifesaving colonoscopies and carpal tunnel syndrome surgeries and arthroscopic knee surgeries. All of this by excellent, excellent surgeons that can help save you money. Absolutely. Call today, 677-8888. Ambulatory Surgery Center and A Child's World bringing you school days in Cassia County. Right now with us on the telephone, we have the Curriculum Director for Cassia County Schools, Sandra Miller. Good morning Sandra, how are you?
Good morning Zeb, I'm doing well, thank you. Despite all the heavy smoke, you're right.
I'll tell you what, it's really kind of unnerving to have all this smoke because it's not good for anybody.
I know, I agree.
Well now, everything's back in a full go mode for the next school year. Are you and all the teachers ready?
You know, Zeb, I think we are very close to being ready. We would like to, um, start the year off with a positive note and, um, on Monday, August 24th, we are hosting at Burley High School, uh, a professional development day for all of our certified teaching staff in the district. So everyone is welcome to come. And, um, like I said, it's at Burley High School and the sessions start right at eight and they go all the way till the end of the day, 3 o'clock. And we are offering all kinds of professional development for teachers so that they are ready to start the school year off right and with some really solid, good strategies and good information to help them in the classroom.
All right, now, when you say that, to help them in the classroom, it sounds like something in addition to the actual class that you're teaching, whether it's biology or English or whatever. What are some of the other themes that you're gonna be teaching and talking about?
Okay, so we did a needs assessment at the end of last school year, April, May, and we compiled the results. And all certified teachers were given the survey and they could complete it, telling us what other needs or what needs did they have to start this new school year off in a positive manner. And some of the, um, the surveys, there were three prominent themes. One of them was technology integration, they want some help with that. Um, they want some help with special population students, those that might have learning disabilities or language disabilities, challenges such as that. And then they, they just wanted overall content help. So some breakout sessions will be provided for different content areas, English Language Arts, Math. Um, we also are offering a number- Um, we also are offering a number of sessions on special populations, um, some migrant question and answers, um, some English Language Learner question and answer sessions, um, some special ed sessions, how to motivate the unmotivated, how to determine why a student has a certain behavior in a classroom and what a teacher can do to help with that behavior. Um, and then we just have some really good, um, CPR certification. Um, what, from the perspective of our school nurse, she'll be doing a breakout of what every teacher kinda needs to know from that angle for health and wellness for children.
All right. Now, let me interrupt you.
Huge variety.
Let me interrupt you right there, Sandra. I let you go on and on and there's some great topics, but I've gotta ask you some questions there.
Sure.
Do you, Sandra Miller, feel that if someone all of a sudden drops to the floor that you are qualified for CPR? Have you taken that course?
I am not currently CPR certified, however, I have been in the past.
Ah.
Because I was a coach.
I see. And I find this to be extremely valuable for anybody and everybody in education because nobody can guarantee what a successful classroom is gonna be all day long. All of a sudden, somebody might be in need and the teacher would not know what to do.
Right.
And this is very important, they're gonna learn this on Monday, the 24th, right?
Yep, there is a breakout session and we're leaving it up to the teachers as to which six one-hour sessions. We have a few that are block sessions, like two hours, and CPR, of course, is a three-hour session.
Okay.
So they would choose to go to that and then three other ones. But it's really up to the teacher as to their own personal needs and what they believe will help them be successful this school year.
Are the teachers being kind of, I get the feeling, I should say, that they're being overrun with all the information that they have to ascertain and try to learn and try to utilize? Do teachers feel like, holy smokes, I can't keep up with everything?
I think sometimes they do feel a little bit overwhelmed and that sometimes we have some challenges that we have to, uh, overcome because of certain mandates, you know, from, from different levels. But for the most part, teachers in the district are so knowledgeable and so skilled that it's pretty easy for them, once they understand what they need to do and the needs of their children in their classroom to accommodate and to make those changes. They adapt very quickly.
You know, in the old days, when they circled the wagons at night, that's when I went to grade school. And I went to a country school, as a matter of fact, and I'm proud of it. Uh, but the kids, we were all sitting at the main table, our small little classes, whether it was sixth grade or whatever. And we all seemed to mold together for the philosophy of the teacher. Is it harder today to mold together a common thought with the classrooms?
You know, I, I think it's a little bit harder today just because we have such diversity in classrooms. And we value that diversity and love that every child is a little different and brings some kind of, um, strength or uniqueness to the environment. So it is more challenging, but we have such tools and, and the skill level of teachers anymore is just incredible. And, um, and so they make it happen.
I see.
They mold all these great personalities and ideas together and they make learning happen through it. And so it's just, it's fun to watch in the classroom, it's fun to see the teachers and how professional they are and how skilled they are in what they do.
I'm gonna ask you a question, and I know that you're probably gonna think I stepped out of a cave in the Stone Age someplace, but my own personal feeling is that we have become too reliant on technology and instead of letting the kids' brains figure the problems out. Am I wrong?
Yeah, well, I think that we don't rely too much on the technology because we use it as a tool to enhance student learning. So our first priority is that students think for themselves, not the technology thinking for them. But then they are able to use the technology to go to deeper levels.
Okay.
Um, in their thinking.
All right.
So, and I, that's our philosophy. And I don't know if what you're perceiving to happen is happening anywhere, you know, else or in any of the other classrooms, but in Cassia County, I think that we use it just as a tool, just like we do a textbook.
All right.
It's a tool, but students have to think on their own first.
All right, we have a caller with a question. Go ahead caller, please, you're on the air.
Yes, good afternoon, Judy. I'd like to ask you a question. In the afternoon on K-Bar Radio, there is unannulated by commercials for teaching, recruiting teachers and that sort of thing. I would like to know if that's being donated by the Family Broadcast or is it coming out of taxpayers' money?
Sandra, could you respond to that over the air, please, as far as the commercials are concerned?
Uh, I can, only that I can tell you, I am not sure who is paying for those.
Okay.
I can find out. Um, but, um, to be honest, I couldn't give you an answer that would be correct.
All right, well, there's your homework assignment for the week and then next week you can call in. I have a question. Um, I've come out on this radio program and it's my opinion, after reading many, many documents and many, many books on the subject of Common Core education, I see that it says Idaho Core, Integration into English, Art, Math, Science, et cetera. Is that just using the terminology Common Core without the word common? What is that thought right there on, on those words about what the teachers are gonna study on that day?
Yes, it is Common Core and Idaho has, um, termed it Idaho Core, just because it's what we use at the state level here in Idaho. And so it is the same, you're right, Zeb, it is exactly the same as Common Core. Those are the standards that our teachers are, um, being, are using in the classroom to get kids to the level that they're ready for career or college.
Is that a good thing or a bad thing, Sandra? I mean, as far as, there are criticisms of Common Core education, and I am one that has been very critical of it. Uh, is this just an acceptance of the move by the federal government in promoting Common Core or did Idaho and the IEA pick it up on their own?
Um, I think Idaho picked it up on, on its own. However, there is a consortium of states that are doing it. And Idaho did research the standards prior to, to adopting them, to saying this is the way we wanna go. And in fact, the English Language Standards, I'm more familiar with than the Math, but really the standards themselves, there is nothing that I can find that is not beneficial for kids. I, I think maybe the way things were rolled out might've been controversial, but I think that the standard document itself is valuable and those skills are needed for our students if they are going to be competitive after graduation in the, in the career setting or at a college level.
The one thing that I've been critical of, and I was very critical of, the program called No Child Left Behind, because I felt, and I think I'm right, that, uh, No Child Left Behind was great to help the slower learners try to catch up and maintain, but it did nothing to let the excellent students reach for a higher star in the sky. Am I right or wrong? You tell me.
I, I think you're probably pretty, pretty close, but it did focus a lot, um, on those students that, that needed some, um, attention, you know, more so than the advanced ones. We, but we also believe that every child needs to be succeeding every day regardless. So we wanna take the, the child where they're at. And those kids that are, are high achievers, we wanna move them just as much as we wanna move the students that are struggle.
Yep, there again though, and I think you'll agree with me on this, not every child is going to attain the same level, no matter how long you wait, no longer, no matter how long you push or whatever. There are not same levels of achievement.
I, I agree with you a hundred percent, but every child can grow personally.
That's true.
And that's our goal.
That's true.
Is there will be growth academically and socially for every child in our system. And that growth might be stronger for some, you know, greater for some, weaker for others. But every child can grow.
But you know, the old adages by many are saying, well, every child, all of us are created equal, that's not true. Uh, there is no one that's always going to be fitted for a certain college curriculum and many might be much better served to get into the trade schools. And I think we've gotta look at individuals, not just a group en masse education.
I agree a hundred percent, and I think our educators agree with that too. Some of our, um, students are gonna, actually, some aren't even gonna go to any post-secondary, they're gonna go right out into the workforce. So we wanna prepare every child for what their lot in life might be, whether it is vocational, technical, whether it is, um, university level or just out into the workforce.
You know, I like you, you're a very nice lady and you're the curriculum director for Cassia County Schools. You're not gonna ever hedge on an answer and I like you a lot. I like people that are straightforward. God bless you, Sandra Miller, and come back if you would.
Thank you, and I certainly will, Zeb, you have a great day.
All right, thank you much. And of course, Cassia County School Days brought to you by A Child's World at 1308 Overland in Burley and Ambulatory Surgery Center at 1344 Highland Avenue in Burley. Yeseree, we thank them for sponsoring Cassia County School Days. Oh, my goodness, old wheels over at our station, I bet he's got him ready to go. Hello, Nick at Berry Equipment and Rental, how are you this morning?
Zeb, good, how are you doing today?
Well, if I was any better than the wrong fat man, be wearing my clothes. What's going on over there?
Oh, just lots of stuff, actually. It's been a, uh, been a busy few months. We, uh, have really started renting out our Deuxsons, the large excavators and large loaders, getting some pretty positive feedbacks. So I'd encourage anyone with a big, big project to come check those out. And of course, we also have our smaller stuff, um, excavators, skid steers, sound assad cutters. It's been the busiest August we've ever had, so come, uh, come by and say hi.
You know, let's talk a little bit about those Deuxsons. Uh, you've got one of those big dudes parked right out in front of your office. Holy smokes, how long does it take to learn to run one of those things?
Oh, we get you up and going in probably about fifteen minutes. Pretty easy if you've been around equipment, even if you haven't, they articulate in the middle, so they have a really tight turning radius, uh, fast controls, super smooth, just really easy to use.
Have you got any, uh, specials on the Deuxson loaders right now that you wanna tell people about? Because man, they can get a job done on a dairy, a feedlot, uh, cleaning up on the farm, they are something else.
That's right, we've got some leasing starting at about $21.99 a month, and that's for a good sized loader, not just your, your entry level. Uh, excavators, $24.99 a month leasing, and that's, uh, sixty months. We also allow for demos and what we just put out, I think I gave you some copy the other day about the Deuxson Rock.
Yeah.
Mind if I tell people about that?
No, you go right ahead.
All right, so come in, if you're looking for a new loader, new excavator, and you wanna try something out, of course you can demo them here. Um, but if you qualify for a trip to the rock, we take you down to Tucson, Arizona for two days, give you a five-star dinner and a five-star hotel, take you to run equipment and an active copper mine there in Tucson.
Oh, my.
And we go to the Deuxson Ski Shooting Club to finish everything off.
Well, now, how do they qualify?
Come see us.
How do they qualify to do this? I mean, what do they have to do? That sounds really good.
Well, you gotta come in and talk to us, uh, myself or Eli or a number of our salesmen. And, uh, we feel you out, see what your timetable is, what equipment you're looking at, and , uh, basically see how, how interested you are and go from there.
Now, if you're gonna take them down to Tucson, Arizona in August, uh, do those Deuxsons have air conditioning?
They sure do. And you're gonna need it, we're there even in March and it is warm.
Okay. Hey, and you got some great buys on Bobcats, tell us about that.
That's right, some of our Bobcats start at, uh, well, we have zero percent for sixty months across the board on a lot of the skid steers, um, excavators, point nine for sixty months. But we have about two dozen machines in our Twin Falls store right now, some with cabs, some without, configured any way you like, some that'll pick up fifteen hundred pounds, some that'll pick up, uh, three thousand pounds.
Wow.
I'm gonna get a truckload in here next week and we should have eight to ten machines out front by the end of next week here as well.
Oh, my goodness. Now, are these hard to learn how to use because, boy, they're so sensitive, they can turn on a dime and give you nine cents change? They're really something.
Yeah, they sure can. We go over everything with you before you leave, make sure you're comfortable. And of course, if anything goes wrong or, or you need a question answered on anything or just a phone call away.
Now, are they hand controls or foot controls or do some have both?
Yep, some have both, they're varied. Our smaller machines are more basic, so your foot controls and, uh, medium size and larger size have what's called SJC controls, which are joystick controls.
Mm-hmm.
Generally, we can get you whatever style you want, uh, if you give us a little notice. We have a pretty big selection of rental and of course, en masse, a selection of new.
Oh, my gosh, you know, even an old cowboy like me, uh, you could teach me how to drive one of those things, right?
Oh, you bet, come by anytime.
And you're not afraid that all of a sudden I'd start spinning and wouldn't quit till dark?
Well, we'd put you down in the gravel pit down behind us there and you'd go nuts in the morning.
I gotta do that. I'll tell you what, now, you've got three locations to serve everybody, tell us about that.
That's right, well, we're here in Burley, just east of McCain Foods on Highway, uh, Highway 30. In Twin Falls, we're by the old hospital, uh, there on Addison Avenue. And in Jerome, we're on South Lincoln, just behind the auction house, uh, before you get to the railroad tracks over there.
All right. And literally, you have all the equipment to get any job done right.
That's right, and if we don't, we can typically find it for you.
You know, Nick, you're just a good old boy and I appreciate all this information. And don't you be a bit surprised if someday you see a fat cowboy on crutches coming in for a lesson on Bobcats and you're the man that's gonna teach me and we'll talk about it on the radio, how's that?
Hey, that sounds great, anytime, Zeb.
All right, what are the store hours so they can stop in and see you?
Monday through Friday, we're here 7:30 to 5:30, and Saturday, eight to five.
All right. Hey, thanks much, Nick, God bless you at Berry Equipment and Rental, we'll have you back, thanks.
Thanks, Zeb, we'll see you.
All right, take care. You know, I just absolutely gotta get in there and try that. Those, uh, I could use a Bobcat here because of where my, how my barn is configured and everything, so I can get in there and out. Holy smokes, that'd be fun. Lookout Barn. And, uh, we are going to take a little bit of a break right now and we're gonna send it back over to our main studios. And then when we come back, we're gonna have an old friend of mine on the radio, I mean old friend of mine, that I still owe at least four or six dinners to because his Seahawks beat my Packers. We're gonna be talking to Randy Nguyen over at Les Schwab Tires West. So stay tuned, I'll be back in about three minutes.
And now, back to Zeb at the Ranch on AM 1230 KBAR. To reach Zeb, call 436-2244 or toll-free 1-866-927-4587. And now, here is Zeb Bell.
Oh, thank you, sir. Don't forget the Gooding County Fair and Rodeo also going on this week, all through the weekend. And of course, uh, their great big rodeo starts tonight at 8:00 PM, Five Stock Contractors. Woo, baby, are they gonna have some buckin' horses and bulls. And of course, right after the rodeo's over, the music with the Garage Boys Band in Shoot Number Seven. Man, they have a good, good time over in Gooding at the Gooding County Fair and Rodeo. And on Saturday, don't forget, at 11:00 AM, the Idaho Rodeo Hall of Fame induction ceremony and dinner. And we are really looking forward to that. So don't forget it, over there on the north side, you better believe, at the Gooding County Fair and Rodeo for 2015, at the Gooding County Fairgrounds. Right now, let's get on the phone with an old friend of ours that absolutely is gonna tell us all about Magic Valley Les Schwab Tire Centers, and that's Randy Nguyen from Tires West. Good morning, Randy, how are you?
Hey, Zeb, how are you today, bud?
Absolutely great. What's going on with all the Magic Valley Les Schwab Tire Centers right now towards the middle portion of August?
Well, right now, Zeb, we're just, uh, it's been really good in here for all of us, grain harvest just finishing up and, uh, and we got our, we got a good selection of, of passenger and light truck tires on sale, especially our Toyos, uh, car and pickup tires, uh, our Toyota, or also our Cooper, uh, Master Crafts are on sale. Uh, we've put a lot of those on and it's been, it's been a good wear and tire for us. Uh, we're also doing that promotion, as you say, that free pre-trip safety check, uh, where people come in and, uh, we're glad to inspect your tires, check the air pressure. Uh, we also look, do a visual inspection, how the tires are wearing, if they're wearing on edges, if it looks like any alignment, uh, look underneath for front end problems, uh, shocks, rust, check your battery, just kind of a check to make sure everything's good before you head off on the road somewhere this summer, so.
You know, Randy, I've got a question I don't think I've ever asked you before for the many times that you've been on this program, and, and I just purely don't know. How do they, tire manufacturers and people like Les Schwab, how do you discern what kind of tire, what kind of tread design, how do they go about testing and retesting to see what's gonna better suit different driving, uh, needs? How do they go about studying all that?
Well, that's the nice thing about, uh, about Les Schwab is the purchasers are, uh, are really good about, about finally getting quality brands and quality products in here. Um, there's some overseas stuff that they won't touch because they're worried about recalls or, or, or tires not wearing good enough, and they try to stay with the good brands, the Coopers, the Toyos. Uh, and our entry level stuff is also quality, uh, and level stuff is also quality, and they go through, and they have a rigorous checklist they go through with the production people, and make sure that their tread designs are compatible with the markets that we have here at Les Schwab, and also make sure we're not gonna have any issues as far as our regular tread wear or not very long tread life. So the molds are all made according to the Les Schwab specs, and so far, they've been pretty good quality products.
Absolutely. Now, do they have actual machines that you mount the tires on, and they literally drive them for like sixty thousand or seventy thousand miles, so they can see what the tread wear's gonna be like?
Absolutely, Zeb. They have, they won't put, they won't manufacture a tire until they're tested many, many, many times in different applications to make sure that they're gonna work for, as I said, any of the markets here that the Les Schwab stores are at. So they're tested many, many times, and drove a lot of miles before we ever put them on our showroom floors, so.
Now, you have to have good people, and I think I am so impressed, and I'm not saying that because you're our major sponsor, it's the honest truth. To find those kind of really capable, knowledgeable employees with their attitudes of wanting to serve, how tough is that in this day and age?
It's hard, Zeb. I mean, you know, it's tough to hire. I hire most people here at this store, and I know Max has a hard time over in Paul, and some of the stores on the west end of the valley, but it's hard to find, because you gotta find, obviously, people that are willing to work, but then you gotta find people that appeal to the public, and look good, and have a professional attitude. We're pretty lucky getting the guys we got, and we have a good compensation program, so we don't have very much employee turnover, and that's good for us, too, because they understand the business and stay with us long enough. They know most of the customers and what they like, and yeah, that's a hard deal, that's for sure, but our low employee turnover is pretty good for us, for sure.
You know, Randy, one of the things I think is overlooked today, and I'd like to hear you tell me if I'm wrong, I think you're gonna agree with me, is the seven-letter word "service." You know, I don't care if it's a restaurant, I don't care what it is, it's service to the customer that kinda lights a spark in their mind that they wanna go back and do business with people. And I think that's what makes Les Schwab Tire Centers so great, is the service and the attitude. Would you agree with that?
Oh, absolutely. I agree, and I've told you this many times before when we've talked, but my dad always used to say that everybody sells tires at service, so that sets you apart, and I agree with that. So you just have to have, you have to have the service, and people, you know, the last thing people wanna do is come to a tire store and sit for a couple hours. So we try to get people in and out, and make it somewhat pleasant for them when they're here, so they don't have too boring of a time.
Alright, now, a little bit on the story of Mr. Les Schwab. You know, you and I have talked many, many times about Les Schwab. I had a chance to meet him years and years ago, when I used to announce the rodeo up at Primeville, Oregon. There was a man that didn't start this tire business until later in life. Give us a quick synopsis of how successful this man was later in life.
Well, yes, Zeb. He started in nineteen fifty-two, as you say, in Primeville, Oregon. Started an OK Rubber Welder Tire Store, and he did never put a franchise, never put like a Michelin, or a BF Goodrich, or any sign in front of his store. He just put a Les Schwab Tire sign, and sold different types of tires. You don't wanna get linked as just a one-brand tire store, and he took care of his employees, and he went to Redmond after that, and Bend, Oregon, and it just kinda took off from him. And now, there's four hundred and fifty, four hundred and sixty stores, I believe now, through all the west coast, almost now clear down to the Los Angeles area, and then across to Denver, and covers eight western states, and yeah, it's been really good. And we moved our headquarters from Primeville to Bend, Oregon, a couple years ago, or not a couple, about six or seven years ago, and that's where the headquarters are now, and the distribution center's still in Primeville, but the main office and the employees there and the vice presidents are all in Bend now. It's been a good transition for everyone.
Well, you offer more than just tires. I mean, we're talking about front-end alignments, we're talking about shocks and struts, we're talking about batteries, and one thing that a lot of people just don't pay attention to, and believe me, it could be life-saving, is the best in brake service. Man, you want top-notch people that really know brakes.
Absolutely, absolutely, and yeah, we have got four people here. I know most of the stores have three or four that just do brakes. And we do more than just pad flaps. They reman, put remanufactured calipers on, bleed the entire system, turn the rotors to make sure that everything is safe. If you just simply put a brake pad and let it go, there's too many other brake components that could go bad, and then you've got a problem. So we do a complete brake job, and that's all that any of the Les Schwab stores do.
Now, I'd be amiss if I didn't bring up the fact that you are a Seattle Seahawk fan, and yes, you trimmed my sails for the last couple of years, unfortunately. Is this year gonna be any different? Because the first game of the NFL season, it seems to me like we're gonna go head-to-head again.
Yeah, Week Two, our division is playing your division, and Week Two, the Seahawks go to Lambeau Field, and it's a Sunday night game, and I'm afraid we're gonna be in trouble, because you guys have, you've been to Seattle a lot of times, and I think they're already waiting, and ready waiting for us there.
Yeah, but the point is, you can't lose, because I already owe you, I gotta purchase a restaurant in order to pay you back.
That's right. We have a couple steak dinners. I'm afraid you're gonna whittle it down after the Week Two. We'll see, though. I don't know. It'll be a great game, though.
Let me ask you this final question about your Les Schwab Tire Centers. You have seven great locations and many, many great people working for you. Why don't you highlight the seven locations and tell everybody where they're located?
Well, we've got F. obviously here in Burley, and Max in Paul, Wayne in Rupert, we've got Dave on Blue Lakes and Twin, and then John on Poline, and then Mike in Buell, and a Mike in Jerome. You know, it's a good deal to have this many Les Schwab locations. You know, people get out of town, you're dealing with a company that has four hundred and fifty stores around, and then your tire's fixed, or road has warranties, whatever you need done at any store, and the prices are generally most all the same at all the stores. That's a big benefit if you're sending kids to college, or going on a road trip, if you're staying somewhere out west, there's gonna be a Les Schwab location where you're at, so that's a good benefit and a good plus to our customers.
Well, I am honored to have you on the program. I'm honored to have Les Schwab Tire Centers as my major sponsor, and I say thank you very much. Randy Nguyen, Tire's West, for being on the program this morning. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Zeb. You do a great job for us, too, so we appreciate you, too. So thank you very much.
Alright, take care. Thank you.
See ya. Bye-bye.
I'm really high on those folks, and I mean that. I was doing business with them long before they became a major sponsor on my program, and they are the best, nicest people I've ever worked with, your Magic Valley Les Schwab Tire Centers. Really, really good folks. You know what? We're gonna do a weather forecast here real quick, and the weather this hour is brought to you by Scarrow's Meats. I'm hungry again. Boy, I'll tell you why. They're your hometown meat cutter at three thirty-one North Road, Jerome, three two four seven six five seven, the number to call. And they are changing the way we eat, one delicious bite at a time. Now, they guarantee everything they sell, absolutely, and they've got that hot summer barbecue special. Listen to this. For just a hundred and ninety-nine bucks, you get ribeye steaks, New York strips, sirloin tips, ground beef, boneless pork chops, brats. I love brats! It's delicious. All of that, fifty pounds of meat for a hundred and ninety-nine bucks, summer barbecue special, from Scarrow's Meats, three thirty-one North Road in Jerome. And right now, here's the weather.
Here's your weather. As we do get one day closer to the weekend, we still have that air quality advisory in effect due to all of the wildfires in the area, so if you have asthma, any sort of upper respiratory issues, please take that under advisement if you go out and about today. Otherwise, looking at sunny skies, it is gonna be slightly breezy, winds out of the southwest, right around twelve miles an hour. Expect a high of eighty-eight for today, tonight low of fifty-six. Tomorrow, winds picking up to about twenty miles an hour out of the west, sunny skies, high of eighty-two with an overnight low of fifty. Then for Saturday, still gonna be slightly breezy, cooling down to about seventy-four under sunny skies, and a low right near forty-seven for Saturday night. That's your weather forecast for Zeb at the Ranch.
Ah, Gina, thank you. Well done. And don't forget Scarrow's Meats, three thirty-one North Road, Jerome, three two four seven six five seven, bringing you the weather and changing the way we eat, one delicious bite at a time. Well, today is Lunch Bunch, and exactly forty-five minutes from right now, we're gonna be there at Denny's, six eleven Overland in Burley. And again, I wanna say thank you very much for the following businesses, contributing gift certificates to be drawn for, and we thank Stokes Food Center, thank you very much, along with Hanson Orchard, and also Waters Gift with Sharon, thank you. Walmart, great folks to work with, and Smiths Food and Drug, thank you very much. We're gonna be there at Denny's Restaurant in about forty-five minutes, six eleven Overland in Burley. Next Monday on the program, my goodness, already the twenty-fourth of August. How time flies when you're having fun. We are gonna have a jam-up, great program scheduled. We have the open hour of eight oh six to nine o'clock for the open forum, questions and everything else that first hour. Then at nine oh six from Colorado, Doug Johnson. Doug is really good at taking a look at and talking about all the intricacies of politics. And at nine thirty, Alliance Defending Freedom and Kerry Kupac. They've got always great stories that we need to be involved with. And then we're gonna be talking education. We think we have got, I say the word "think," we think we have Kyle Olson all scheduled from eagnews.org, coming in to talk about back-to-school, some of the problems nationally that are going on with the Obama administration. And then at ten thirty, I've been looking forward to this interview, Rick Martin, the head of the Concerned Citizens that are against the Refugee Center at CSI. We're gonna have here in the studio, he's gonna come out here to the studio, and we're gonna have thirty minutes of really good conversation about the CSI Refugee Center and all of our concerns. So that's coming up on Monday, the twenty-fourth. Enjoy the fairs. What have we got here, Deanne? Something I need to put on the air right now?
From Debbie.
Oh, it's from Debbie Chrisfield. Okay, we've got an answer to the question about who pays for the school ads, and Debbie wanted to get this on before I leave here this morning. We have had so many certified positions to fill this year that using the radio to help us get an awareness is just a smart business practice. In fact, because of the ad, we hired the main position we're looking to fill. We get funding for a diesel mechanic, but struggled to fill the position, and we have always advertised in the paper and on our website. We expanded the radio, and it was clearly a good decision. So there you have it, from Debbie Chrisfield, Information and Communications Officer of the Cassia County School District. Okay, I'm gonna wrap it up. I'm headed for Lunch Bunch, and that's at Denny's at six eleven Overland in Burley. My good buddy Wheels is gonna play a couple of patriotic tunes, and then he's gonna join us at Lunch Bunch. God bless, have a great week, and don't forget, we'll be back here on Monday at eight oh six, Zeb at the Ranch. And remember this, the way things were are the way things ought to be.